She was supposed to give us a cigarette.
Okay, um, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02. And first up, um, I'd like to recognize our meeting, uh, minute taker, extraordinaire Danae, and this is her last, uh, meeting before she-
Yeah, could you put the camera on Danae?
Take- Take the leave. She's about to have her fourth baby. So, very exciting. So, she always does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, when do you think you can come back?
She'll be at the next meeting. She'll be at South Higgins at the beginning of December.
That's what Danae told me. She said, "I could do it, I could do the minutes at home by watching the livestream and sending the minutes in after that."
There you go.
She said, "No, you're not doing that."
No.
Thank you.
You can handle it.
Okay, uh, next up, principals' report, and I'm gonna turn this over to Porter.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to, uh, if it's all right with you, because we have a bunch of children out in the hallway that need to get back to their homework, if it's okay, I'd like to introduce our champions, our, uh, girls' cross-country champions, and Coach Platt can speak a little bit about them very briefly, and, uh, it's okay to bring them in?
Absolutely. Great. Thank you.
Morning!
Hi, girls!
We have a bunch of parents that are rolling the back door in just a second.
Yep, great.
So, we just want you to know you're on camera, too, so everybody across the world is now watching.
All right, well, it's been a very exciting year. I'd wanna turn over to Coach Justin Platt and the, and the group. Uh, this is our cross-country state champions, but he'd like to tell a little bit briefly about what they've done, and some other girls that couldn't make it tonight, and their parents will be in about one half a second.
So, uh, yeah, this is the, uh, Amherst Middle School, uh, girls' cross-country champions. Uh, this year, they competed, uh, in Division One, uh, and they beat Hillside, uh, Middle School by ten points at, uh, the state, at our Division Championships. Uh, and then the following week, they competed at the Londonderry State Meet, uh, in which they, again, came in first in the race. Uh, they won by, cross-country, uh, the lower the points, the better. They had, uh, less than half the points of the second-place team. Uh, it's a young team. Uh, our scorers this year, we had two eighth graders, a seventh grader, four sixth graders, and one fifth grader. So, I think we hopefully have more years in front of us to, to do well. I'm very proud of them.
Any questions of anybody in the board that would like to, um, ask them what it's like to run a whole bunch?
So, I'm trying-
And not get tired?
I'm trying to remember. My, some, one of my children ran cross-country, and what's the distance that you guys run again?
Two miles.
Two miles. It's a little bit over two miles, is that right?
Under.
Or a little under?
A little and a half over.
Okay. So, where was the championship? Which school was it at?
Um, the, uh, Tri-County Championship is run out of Nashville South.
Okay.
And the, uh, State Championship is run out of Londonderry High School.
Okay. So, how were those courses? Were they harder than usual, or what did you guys think?
I thought that the Tri-County course was fun, but, um, the State Champion course, it was really rainy that day, and it was kinda muddy, and it was fun, but I don't think it was quite as fun as the, uh, Tri-County course.
I like the way it was wide open, um, as a start of the Londonderry Meet. Um, and I like Tri-County. I just like the course. The Tri-County course, it's like, kind of easier to, like, get ahead of other people, which is a little bit nicer.
I can just say, uh, as the principal, how proud I am, but also, we're not looking at just a bunch of great athletes here, but it's one of the finest girls we could ever ask for, and we're very proud of you.
Totally.
And if you could turn around and let the people in the TBC get back of your, your, uh, there we go, look at that. That's pretty awesome.
So, could I ask a question? When do you start training for all this, and when does this training stop now, or you just keep going, keep running, and do you continue all the time?
Well, we start, um, a few weeks before school starts, and then we end it right after, right after the championship.
But some people go into, um, Grand State Flash, which is another program, and it's, um, some of the teams, one of the teams, um, Justin.
Yeah.
And that's some, some of the girls do that after the season ends, and then we just go back into the school season, so it's a cross-country, you know?
Yeah, with running, it's one of those sports that if you can run pretty much all year, it really helps you. So, you don't have to really work hard all year, just try to keep going.
Thank you.
So, the fifth, sixth, and seventh graders, how many of you are gonna come back and run again next year?
All right.
The coach is very happy.
Yes, very happy.
It's on TV, though.
Hey, Annie.
All right.
Well, I wanna thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.
Oh, I know. Yep. That was fun.
All right, that's very exciting. We tried the new format. It, uh, the new format is, uh, Gary and I are trying to be consistent if we can, so every once in a while, we realize that we may put something in a, another pillar. There'd be, uh, some things can fit into more than one, but, uh, we hope you appreciate our stab at, at this time. Um, it took a little more time, but it was, it was very interesting, and, and I think, once we get used to it, it'll be much easier the next time around. So, I was wondering about a couple of things that, in there, that I would like to talk about. I have here with me, uh, Dan Hendricks, my, uh, social studies curriculum coordinator, who is also a seventh grade teacher, who would like to talk a little bit about, uh, hopefully, uh, a trip that we can take for the seventh grade, and she'd like to present that, if she could.
Dad?
Sitting, is it, Stan?
Yeah.
Sid.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm Debbie Hendricks, and I'm, uh, social studies curriculum coordinator, um, at the Amherst Middle School, and I'm here today because we are, um, wanting to put forth a field trip proposal for the spring of 2018. It's something that we've been talking about for a while, and, um, this year, uh, with Bethany and Porter, I really sort of wanted to see what was it gonna take to get this sort of, because it's not a traditional field trip, or it's one that requires a little more, couple steps. Uh, because, one, it's out of state, and, two, it require an overnight. Um, our, it would be in replacement of a field trip, so, uh, likely, our spring field trip to Fenway would be the one that we would, um, discard for this one. We think this one has a greater curriculum tie to it. Um, and with all of the revamping of our curriculum, uh, it just seems that it's important that whatever we're doing within the classroom or outside of the classroom, that there is a direct correlation to what we're doing. Um, in social studies and language arts, we, um, we've created a new unit over the last two years that is, uh, very relevant and is tied. It's called the World at War. Uh, the focus is on world governments and looking at how power is shared, and we do that by exploring World War I, World War II, and the Cold War periods, as we look at Europe as a continent. So, we're looking at geography, land, people. Language arts is reading a book, Animal Farm, which looks at Russian governments, and in social studies and language arts, we do a culminating, um, photojournalism presentation by the students, where they pick a, a topic of interest, like, um, from the World War I, II, or Cold War periods. So, that is the current curriculum, and we feel that this field trip would be an amazing addition to that. Um, I had the pleasure of dragging my husband along to visit this, this weekend. We went down, uh, Porter had gone, and I said, "Well, before I was gonna present, I've been looking online, and I've been talking with the representatives there," but I said, "We were down visiting my brother-in-law, so we went down." And he says, "We're actually gonna tour these?" And I was like, "Yeah, like, it'll be great." Um, and, but as soon as we pulled into the parking lot, he was in awe. I, I don't think I really appreciated what we were gonna go and see until you show up there. There are five enormous ships. The USS Massachusetts is housed there. Uh, it is the world's largest naval, historic naval museum in the world, so it is, um, I mean, it really, to have this right in our backyard. So, few people attend it. Uh, the only people that I know that have attended it are typically associated with the Boy Scouts. So, we took a tour. We were there, I mean, our own personal sort of tour for two hours, and in those two hours, um, I, you know, I was sort of looking at it from the teacher logistics point of view. I was looking at how are we gonna bring, you know, 180 children through this, um, what would it look like? Uh, groups of 10, um, as we were going through each ship, uh, the further and further we got down in, I could see, like, all of the kid conversations about, "Let's go through this door. Let's go here. Let's go down. Let's go up." You know, there was amazing things to see. I lost my husband at one point, um, and when I found him, he had, he was going further and further into the, the Soviet ship, and, you know, where most people would stop because the lights were now off, he then suddenly thought it was a wonderful idea to turn his flashlight on and delve further, and we ended up in this compartment with all, everything was labeled in, in Russian, uh, and he was, you know, sitting there going through all the little books. So, it was just absolutely amazing. Um, in two hours' time, we didn't even touch the surface of what was available to see there. I mean, I was really logistically just trying to see what each ship, there was a submarine, um, two destroyers, there's a PT boat, there's, uh, it was just tremendous. Uh, and there's museum information throughout it. The basic trip would be, uh, arrival, say, midday. Uh, they would tour in these mini groups. There would be, uh, breakout sessions where they would have, um, knot, uh, knot tying, um, Morse code, flag folding. Um, there's veteran speakers or videos of veterans that are giving real-world experiences. They would have dinner on the ship. Um, you'd be staying on the USS Massachusetts, uh, dinner on the ship, an evening movie. They would sleep in the bunks. The USS Massachusetts used to house 500 soldiers, so you would be sleeping, and, uh, you can see the pictures there of what we'd be sleeping. I was able to fit myself on a second bunk. I felt comfortable with that. Uh, the third, the bottom one was very low to the ground. I'm assuming they'd probably ban the fourth one up high for kids. You're just being too high, but, um, so the accommodations, we would sleep on the ship. You'd wake up in the morning, you'd have breakfast, and then they give you a boxed lunch, um, for the remainder of your tour. So, it, the kids would be onsite for about 24 hours. Um, we figured the cost would be somewhere in the range of 100 to $125. Um, we're proposing this for the following spring to give families the opportunity to be aware of the additional cost, if, if it was something that was to be approved. Um, and it really, I think it just fits with the curriculum. It fits with 21st, 21st century learning, and kids coming back hands-on, inspirational. Um, I know, I know I converted my husband into a believer within two hours. I, and I just, I, I just think it's a mesmerizing experience. I know a lot of our current overnight experiences are all environmentally based, but I think this also ties in, not just to social studies and language arts, but the STEM component is tremendous as well. Um, you walk through these ships, and, well, you know, what a great tribute to what our, our, uh, military system was and where it is today. I mean, it's, the potential, the possibilities. I think it just really was, um, an impressive trip, and that's what we are proposing. I've sort of put the financials together for you in this, um, and happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for Dan?
Yeah.
I, I love that you put this together for us. It's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds exciting. I like that it has a nice, tight tie to the curriculum. And I agree with you. I'm sure it's more about a tight tie than, um, the trip to Fenway that would replace. What is the burden to the family, the additional burden to the family? Because I see here, we say the total cost, 100 to 125 for a student. How much of that is the parents paying? Is the parents paying for all that? How's that working?
Um, so, the, the current cost, um, the estimate that we think was, it'd be 100 to 125. I think it would, at this point, unless we were to do fundraising or something additional, uh, that would be entirely the family cost. The current Fenway trip was $30. So, for, you know, depending, depending on how we, you know, ran the numbers on it, um, if it stays, if we can get it as low as 100, then it's $70 additional to what the families are being asked to pay now. Um, you know, in order to split the cost, you certainly could, eh, incur a $50 cost at the beginning of the year, um, and give families the option of paying it sort of in two installments, so that it's, it isn't a bigger burden, you know, at one time, you know, at the end of the year, when families are feeling stressed about all the end-of-the-year pieces. So, there, you know, we certainly could do something to help at least spread the cost out, if that's helpful. Um, we, we typically, for, I know, for camps and, and other situations, I know there, we've tried to offer scholarships for families that wouldn't be able to attend. We've always tried to make that work for any family that felt it to be too much. I don't know, again-
We would not run a trip that didn't allow every single student who wanted to go, go. There'll be some children probably who, who may choose not to, may not be there, cup of tea to, to sleep in a bunk in the, in the ship, but, uh, we're gonna encourage all of them. I think it's very exciting. I've been there three times, stayed over three times, so it is really something else. And inside, uh, in the very, um, middle of the ship is also where it's a, it's a memorial for all of the military sailors, soldiers, Marines, Coast Scout who perished during World War II. All their names are inscribed inside there. Very, very haunting, powerful, and they, they talk, it's considered to be hallowed, you know, hats off, very much, and you go in there and see all those names. Very, very powerful. My, I, the first time I went in, I walked in, there were several doors to go in. I walked straight ahead, and I saw my mother's first husband, who was killed right at the end of World War II, his name up there, right in front. Very, very powerful, you know? Um, so, uh, I'm really supportive of this. I was a social studies teacher, uh, for 20 years in the district, and I don't think there could be anything more exciting for, to encourage the social sciences than this.
Thanks. That, that was my concern, students being left behind.
We never would do that.
Especially with a tight connection to the, to the curriculum, they say. We don't want students to, to be left. So, that's great. Thanks. This is for the entire class?
This would be for the entire class, and, um, you know, as I said, it, it can sleep up to 500, so we wouldn't have any difficulty sleeping 180, and I've promised those couple of teachers that have back or other issues, that I've found a couple of, there were some, must've been sort of captain-type births that would allow them a couple of accommodations. I know, yeah, but, yeah. But the rest of the kids are gonna, we're all gonna be in the, uh-
Yeah, I mean, I think it sounds like a great trip.
Yeah.
So, not this spring, spring after?
I think that's, yeah, I think, I think we would, you know, you'd really wanna start, I think, the school year off. You know, as much as I'd love to see if we could get it in this year, I think in fairness to families, I think it would be best to start the school year off the following year. That way, it'd open house. We're letting families know. We could put in, like we said, like a two installment plan, just to sort of break the cost up, and, um, you know, like you said, I, I want everybody to attend. I want everybody to experience it. I, you know, the seventh grade teachers are very much on board with it, and, you know, we'd love to, love to go explore with the children.
Yeah, I think it sounds great. Um, do we need to approve, or we're just-
You're not gonna start advertising or talking until?
We'd, I would say the fall and, and fall.
Okay.
Have some time?
Yeah.
Looks great.
Yeah.
I know we talked originally, and we talked about it. Bring it forward if you can.
I actually, I have a question. It's more of logistics of how overnight field trips go when the place that you're going to provides the food, because we have an ever-growing population of kids with food allergies or sensitivities. Do you always make sure, ahead of time, that kids that need to bring their food, there's a refrigerator space for them or something?
Yeah, um, I mean, all of our camps have always provided, um, are very good with that, and, uh, I think in this day and age, that would definitely be a, a key priority. We would travel with a nurse. We always do. Um, you know, I mean, I even have some of the basic logistics, because having walked through there myself, uh, you know, I, I'm not sure that you'd even really go through a great deal of changing. I think you'd keep it pretty simple. I mean, it's, you know, especially if we've got girls and boys, you know, we'd separate on two sides of the ship, and it's fairly large, but, you know, remember, this was a men's-only facility back in the day, so, you know, they're not beautiful accommodations, you know, we're, we're not going, this is not the spa. Um, so, you know, we would wanna dress accordingly, sleep in comfortable clothing that you can get up and around in the middle of the night. No one's going to shower there. It is, you know, it's a one-night experience, so we're gonna, we're gonna rough it like, like they did, you know?
And it is very organized. It is federal property, and, uh, they, they do, um, segregate the students very well. Uh, when we were there with the Scouts, there were, um, Girl Scout groups there as well, and you really only saw them during the, the time when they, when the ship is available for them, and there's, there's people that are in charge all the time. Um, so, it really, I didn't find any, any areas where I was worried about, especially where we'll be Welshap.
Yeah, yeah. It's called, the program itself is called Nautical Nights, um, you know, and, and all of the information that I've been getting is, is through that program.
So, would there be additional costs for this in the budget for transportation and?
That's, so, the, the transportation cost is $6,500, and that is, um, part of what is going into that $100 cost.
Okay.
So, you-
Are there any other budget items for us?
So, the other, only other item is the teacher stipend piece that would typically be for an overnight. I estimate that to be $4,500.
Okay.
And, um, so, depending on how that piece of it wants to be worked in, um, you could, could be $100 if that's a budget item that wants to be absorbed into the school budget, or if we have to put that into the, the ticket price, then that would be what would bring it up to 125, in my, so.
Yeah, those are rough estimates, where we need to look at the numbers.
Those are my social curriculum.
Yeah, well, we work with that and see, just how-
Okay.
We can make that work.
Okay.
So, you know, so, like, we could keep the cost down for the student in one direction versus the other.
Right. Okay.
But I think-
So, we'd have to talk about that.
That would be your correct.
Yeah. Okay.
But those are really the only costs that I anticipate. Um, it was, I think, the most economical way with the buses that I spoke with, um, were to bring the buses down, to have them stay there, and part of the housing cost would be to provide, like, overnight for the bus drivers. Like, that would all be part of that $6,500.
Okay. So, will this come back to us to, for approval? Okay.
We can continue to talk. I mean, that's why I asked. We have plenty of time. We continue to have our conversations.
Okay.
Sure. So, do you need anything more from me?
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The information passing out to you right now came after my report. I just thought it was really something exciting to highlight. Liz Manolis, our literacy coach, and, um, she had an article in ASCD Express entitled "Full Knowledge" that I read about it. We got, I think, Christine, we got that probably Tuesday or something, or somewhere around there. I just wanted to share that with you. It's pretty exciting to have one of our own published, uh, and so, I just thought I'd share that with you right here.
That's great.
Very cool.
I wanna thank her, and she does a tremendous job. Our coaches do a tremendous job, and we wanted to highlight that for you.
Congratulations to her.
Yes. And then, uh, I guess, I would just say to you, uh, to highlight a couple of things in our report, that our numbers are at 613 right now. We originally budgeted for 591, so that always makes us feel better that we have a few more, yeah, in there. Uh, I keep talking about the STEM, and, and I'm excited about what's happening with, still with our innovation in design. We had, uh, we've had people, um, come visit us continuously, which is exciting. They come through on a regular basis to take a look at, at the, uh, at the facility. We have met with, we met with Charlie Damaris from, um, Curry Lumber, who has been a partner with us for a long time. We provided him with a plaque that we made on our own machine, um, and we gave it to him in a thank you for all the years. He, he really, if you wanna talk about getting involved with STEM and with innovation design, he has been the one. He has given us all kinds of, uh, just cost, uh, materials and given us all kinds of, of free materials that we've been able to, over the years, to do a lot of our work. And he's, and so, we've asked him to partner with us, and he agreed to do that. And we've met with Lowe's, we've met with Walmart, we're meeting with Harbor Freight, and we plan on, uh, also, um, meeting with county stores, which are owned by an Amherst family, and try to get them to partner with us to help us with costs and that, and get involved with this, um, innovation in design, which is really exciting. And, uh, just a little bit of excitement I sent home in my parent newsletter today, and then I'll turn it over to Jerry. Uh, one of the most high-wrenching things for me is every year that we bring our money to the veterans, the VA, uh, from our fundraising. We used to do fundraising with everything from, um, Jeans Fridays to, to just asking penny drives and things like that, and, and more recently, the last two years, we did our annual Walk-A-Thon for veterans. We set a goal of 1,000. Last year, we made 2,100. This year, we set a goal of 2,000. We made $2,900. And I took up stacks of $25, you know, the only thing is, it takes me so long. When I go to a store, I need, I need $1,900 worth of Walmart, I mean, of, of Market Basket $25 cards. They say, "We'll come back in an hour," you know, and you do, but I brought them up there, and they, just the way they react when we bring them, these are people waiting to get money, uh, and for, for food and gas. So, I got $1,000 worth of gas cards from Cumberland France, which we use for either, and then $1,900 for, um, Market Basket, and they're almost in tears when we bring this up there and just, and I, so I sent that out to my parents in my weekly, uh, message, because it's, it's something that, till you've been there and seen these people in need, are heroes that are in need, it, it's just, uh, it's very humbling. And, um, and I happened to be there this time. They said, "You gotta come with me." I went on, on Veterans Day, and they, the lady dragged me through the hospital, and they were just celebrating with, they were taking pictures, they had flags, and they were meeting with, with, uh, local and state VA officials, and I get a, a chance to meet them. I wish I had taken her name. I apologize for that, but she quickly met with me, and she said, "Listen, we've been hearing what you've been doing. Could we come in February and, and honor your school and bring the veterans, our group, with you?" And she said, "So, planning that on us coming in February to honor our veterans in town and to honor our students and staff for, uh, for raising this money." And I'll tell you, she was just, and she gave me a hug. I mean, it was, it was just an incredible moment. I didn't expect it, and, uh, but it was really neat, and they were just so thankful, um, because they have a waiting list for those cards. So, I just wanted to share that, because that's our kids and our families, and, uh, I'll tell you, it is, humbling is the only word to, uh, to, to, uh, express. My dad was a disabled veteran in World War II, and so I know what it's like for families and that stuff to struggle, and, um, so, we're just, we're just so glad. And our kids did the most incredible job carrying the flags around and, and marching, and no complaints, and it was drizzling, and I, I tell you, they knew what the cause was for, and they were, it was incredible.
Thank you very much, uh, Porter. We really look forward to seeing them.
In February, as she promised. She put it on film, so we have it on tape. So, uh, so are there any other questions and things? We put a lot in there this time, which is, which is great, but I just wanna be sure that-
Really happy with the format.
Yeah, format's great.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no other questions, reporter, we'll move on to Jerry. Did you have anything you wanted to highlight?
Um, you know what, uh, something I actually don't have in my report, which is, uh, the disadvantage of going first, is I didn't comment on our Veterans Day report at all. So, we did have assemblies in both locations. They were outstanding. Uh, we had, uh, slide presentations. We had veterans attend, uh, fourth graders who, uh, read some introductory remarks and comments. So, uh, it was, I would say they were the best programs we've had since I've been there, and it took a lot of people to put them together, and students. So, uh, we definitely didn't forget the veterans either. Uh, and then I think the only other thing I'd like to mention, just to make sure we're all tuned in, is, uh, you know, Clark Orpens enrollment is at 683 now, so we're, uh, closer to 700 than we've, uh, been in quite a few years, and that, that is 10 more students than we had on October 1st.
And those 10 more students were directed to which grade?
Uh, I will have to say they're pretty well spread out, uh, so.
I wish they'd all been in fourth, Jim.
What's that?
I wish they'd all been in fourth grade. I wish they'd all been in fourth grade. I don't get to pick.
We do have new students starting on Monday, at least one. There might be two. Or if not, there's another family starting right after the Thanksgiving break.
Jerry, do you remember what you ended with last year?
635.
635.
Which was higher than we had started last year. I think we had started at 620 and 635 was the number we used for projections for this year. So, we already have that number at the end of last year.
Great. Can I just make, looking at that section, how Porter laid it out, whereas so clear is grade one, grade two, or his was more grade five, grade six, grade seven, whereas I actually missed it the first time looking at it as well that the information was there, just because it's all in one paragraph.
So, you want bullets?
Yeah, might be easier to read it, if that's okay.
The thing is, Jerry, just a couple of things. Do we, do we keep track of enrollment by grade every year? Like, do we have a data file on that where we keep?
We can go back, yeah.
Yeah. Because it'd be interesting for me to, I'd like to see like what our enrollment looks like year over year from first grade to fourth grade.
How much of a span would you like to see? Like, would you like to see the current?
The last 10 years.
Oh, 10 years, okay.
Yeah. And then, and then to see preschool and kindergarten.
Well, we have five years.
Five years, yeah.
We can get 10.
Just, we just.
We can get that? Okay.
I can tell you this year's second grade class has 10 more kids than it did this time last year.
Sweet.
So, we have roughly 70 somewhat more students at this point now than we did last year.
Those numbers count yours, his and mine, yes, at least right there.
His numbers are 229.
That's staggering.
Yeah, there's a huge gap.
First grade though? 229? Is that not supposed to be 129?
Yeah, but that's 129.
What year is that?
13.
First grade? Yeah.
Yeah, it's 129.
129.
Yeah. The reason I'm asking, so it's not, it's not that big of a deal, but I'm just wanting to get a sense, like, because the way we're looking at the data now, the school is up to 683, but we have full-time kindergarten and we have preschool. We haven't had that over a 10-year period, so it just gives us a better sense for average class size, you know? Versus, versus adding, you know, because we literally added a grade, which is making the number go up.
Artificially.
Right. So, that's, that's important. The other thing is kindergarten 127, so we're over capacity there?
We're right about that.
I don't know if I'd say we're over capacity, but I would say we are definitely over the ideal student teacher ratio.
We're at 21, right?
I think 20 is pushing it, but.
We're at, are we at 21 or 22?
Well, we have classes at 20.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Did you see, I don't, I happened to see that Mount Vernon posted a thing in the Citizen asking for, we're not asking for promises, but can you just contact us if you're going to be, planning on being in kindergarten next year? Is that something we've thought of doing?
We can get from the town, the number of births in Annemar County every year.
It's not overly accurate.
It's pretty accurate.
Because Lily was missing, but she was born in town.
New kids are missing, but usually those kids will move out.
True.
So, I would tell you, if we look at that birth list for what we're anticipating for next year, it's actually a lower number than what we got for this year, but whether.
So, it's looking like it's going to be lower, you're saying?
Well, the number of births will lower for that year by about 10. Now, again, how many new families have moved in and how many of those families have moved out, we don't necessarily know.
Yeah, because you're looking back the number of births, you're looking six years ago, five years ago. Okay. Do you have one more question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, related to kindergarten, Christine. So, we're at 21 a class. What is the qualitative feedback on what's happening in there?
I actually have a meeting tomorrow with all of the kindergarten teachers. I'd love to get, you know, deeper feedback from them overall because they have a paraprofessional in the room with them. They feel like it's manageable. I know 21 sounds like a lot when they are young and I know September was tough, more so because some kids hadn't had a strong pre-kindergarten experience for all of the routines and so on that they need to be students to know how to sit in a chair and raise their hand and so on. So, it was a little bit of a slow start. We've actually talked about things we might be able to put in place next year to support those specific students, but overall, it's going really well. But I do have a meeting tomorrow, so I can give you an even deeper update after my meeting tomorrow with kindergarten teachers.
Here's where the struggle locked out. Yeah, I would say, remember the kindergarten teachers last year had really emphasized the need for full-time educators. So, I would say they were completely justified in, in pushing for that to happen. It does make a difference. And I would say the growth is pretty noticeable in kindergarten from September to now in terms of, you know, I actually expected to walk into classrooms at the end of the day and see kids maybe napping or, and that is not what's happening at all. So, I think even, even though some of the activities are perhaps a little less demanding, there's not a lay down and, you know, take a nap time. So, I've, I've been impressed. I think it'd be interesting when we get like the data and WEA and that, what, but I think the kindergarten teachers, the kind of base sheet is 21 children full-time is much more manageable than 40 children in two sections.
Divided during the day.
Yeah, another 20 in the morning, 20 at night, so total of 40 children and trying to keep two groups on the same pace.
So, yeah, we didn't actually add another grade. We had kindergarten, but now it's augmented.
We never really had all, or a good chunk of students. Because a lot of people.
It's augmented, it is, but we did have it, so.
Right, sorry.
No, that's okay.
You're right about that. There's one more final question. Kindergarten is important. Can you remind me, so we're going to take, we're going to do a mid-year data point with NIWA. So, what's the trajectory of assessment as they get to third grade to see whether or not this thing has worked?
Yeah, why don't you? Am I still bad yelling for the audience?
Christine, can you tell people who you are?
Yes, Christine Landrell, Director of Curriculum and Professional Development. We do have a full-day K evaluation plan. So, we started collecting data last year with our half-day kindergarten students, which allows us to have a comparison group. So, those students took, for the academic piece, they took the NWEA map for primary grades assessment, fall, winter, and spring. So, we have three data points. We're continuing that for the next few years at least to have that data point and multiple cohorts moving through because you want multiple years of data to compare to your, you know, your comparison group, your half-day kindergarten group. So, we'll have that information. It's a little premature to start comparing, just having one grade, you know, one year of data, but we certainly can look at our growth and we can look at how much growth students have made from like this fall to winter and this fall to spring compared to the other group, our half-day kindergarten group. So, that will be interesting. It is only, it's a little early to do. It's only one really, you know, one cohort to be looking at, but we certainly can do that. And we'll be doing winter in January sometime, I believe, right, Jerry?
And that'll be for kindergarten first and second grade.
Yeah.
We'll do it three times.
Yeah. So, that's our academic data point. The other piece that we have, we wanted to make sure we had a measure of social and emotional learning to see if students in full-day kindergarten developed more quickly socially and emotionally. So, we actually use a screening tool called BIMAS. It's the Behavioral Intervention Monitoring and Assessment Program. And with that tool, it's actually the teachers, they use a, it's similar to any other, you know, social or emotional rating scale, but they actually do it for each of the children in their class. And we do a fall and a winter. So, we can see if there's growth between fall and winter, but also we have those same data points from last year as well. So, we'll be using that for multiple years also.
This is just my last question, is follow-up. So, do we have, I want to say this, do, for the cohort, do we have, like you say, we can, we can look at growth. What kind of growth do we want to see? So, in other words, as we look at this cohort, this would be the initial cohort, right? As we see them move, you know, from year to year, do we have a sense for what kind of growth we want to achieve? So, in other words, instead of looking back retrospectively and saying, oh, we got this growth, shouldn't we be saying, we need this growth? Are we getting it as a cohort? Because I know individual students will be variability, right?
So, for any grade level we look, we want to see at least average growth, which is 50% of our students reaching their growth benchmark. So, that's usually what we use. And, you know, our, you know, that's our, we want to at least see that and we're pleased when we see more than typical or average growth. But 50% is average growth and that's usually what we see at most grade levels.
Do we want average?
I would love to see greater than average, but also first year of implementation of any new program. We have new curriculum and new materials to support teachers. You know, I think average growth would be really strong in first year of implementation. As we move forward, we might kind of raise that bar and look deeper. But it is challenging too for any grade level. There, you could have a year and we all talk about, you know, groups that move through. There's a group that they might be really, a really strong group or a certain personality or a group that really needed more support. So, it's really hard to look at just one year's worth of data because each cohort kind of has their own personality and their own strengths and weaknesses.
Would you say it's not uncommon though for us to have groups that would have target growth of over 60%, 70? We even had classes last year that went over 80%, which was very unusual with NWEA.
Yeah.
So, it definitely is the potential to go way above.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I mean, is there any way to, I don't want to, I don't want to drill on this too long, but I think it's important because is there, this goes back to our KPI.
I know.
If we had a KPI, which we should have, mind you, we would want stretch goals, I would say, and it, we should say a stretch goal, I don't know.
60%.
60%. And if we don't hit 60%, we should be able to go back in, or if we got 80%, if we got plus or minus 10% on either end, we should be able to go back and say, why? Was it a student? Was it a teacher? Was it a whatever? So, that's, that's something, if you could, that's something you should, would you, would you, you know, proactively think about that and be able to?
Yes.
Maybe give us a recommendation on what that looks like?
Yeah, yeah. And we actually, this year, and it's brand new for this year, we budgeted for additional reporting capabilities, which is really exciting. So, we'll be working closely with NWEA and they actually, they do it fall to spring. So, we won't have that additional reporting until spring, but they actually look at fall to spring and they compare you to different districts that are more similar to your own district. So, this is the first year we're doing it, so I don't know quite what to expect, but we'll actually have an opportunity to have some virtual coaching from NWEA. So, data coaches actually work with us to present the work that they did, that deep analysis on our NWEA scores, but also time for us to ask questions and things like that. But I can even reach out to NWEA and find out a little bit more about growth, especially since this is only the second year of us using the map for primary grades. I want to make sure that there's not something different that we should be expecting at those grade levels because it, it does work a little bit different than the regular assessment.
Since we're talking about comparing to other districts that are similar to us and things like that, I know in the past we've discussed, there is not the ability to, or it's not easily, the ability to compare ourselves locally. Is that becoming more available because there are more? Are we able to say, we want to compare ourselves to these surrounding towns? Or are we finding that the surrounding towns don't want to publish their results?
So, NWEA is certainly a choice. Districts choose whether they want to use the map assessment or not. And typically those scores, you know, they're not, they might be shared with school boards, but they're not always readily available. I would have to actually contact each district and see if they were willing to share their scores or not, if they do take that assessment. This virtual comparison group is what it's called. This is enhanced reporting from NWEA. So, they actually choose like districts. So, I don't know, they have a whole list of criteria that they use to determine like districts. So, it would be nationally that they're choosing like districts, not just New Hampshire. But I certainly can find out more details about, you know, what is in that virtual comparison group. Since we haven't ordered the reports yet, I don't know all of the details for how they actually determine. So, that will be an interesting piece to find out more about.
It'd be nice if we could do it locally because a lot of what we've said in the past is we compare apples to oranges half the time because of how we choose to prepare or not prepare our students for SPAC and all of that. So, you know, there's always that up in the air of, are we really comparing equally? Whereas this, I think, might be, you know, a better, I mean, for us, I think we found it's a much better source of how our kids are really doing.
Right.
So, it'd be nice to be able to compare that. So, it'd be great if they could say, you know, compare us locally, you know, if that was an option, not just nationally, but locally.
Yeah, I'll find out about the virtual comparison groups and if we don't have choice for how those groups are determined, then I can also reach out to districts in the area and see if they're willing to share their scores.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Great, thanks Christine.
Thanks, Jerry.
Anyone have any other questions for Jerry? No? Okay. So, next up, we have our committee reports and that refers to the pillar committees that we're on. And just briefly, before we get to that, I just wanted to mention that we had on Tuesday night, an SAU board workshop that we all participated in. And we are getting together to take another look at our strategic plan and strengthen it by developing further our mission, vision, and purpose. And also, we'll be looking at our, how we want to measure ourselves. And that speaks to that, what Jim was talking about. There's been talk about perhaps looking at key performance indicators and growth outcomes. So, I think that was where your questions were headed. So, it's certainly something that as our district, we want to keep pursuing, but we recognize we're within the SAU and we want to keep our work moving forward, but also realize that, that we're working within that context. So, and try to be aligned with that process. So, just want to give everybody an opportunity to talk a little bit about what's happening in their pillar and they might not be a whole lot since we're just sort of getting re-energized, but just briefly. So, and also, Jim, I know you had, I had talked about having you do connect, but Paul is now the Chair of Connect, so can you go back to advance?
Sure.
Okay, great.
I got kicked out of United, so.
All right.
You got United?
So.
Not a good United.
I wasn't being united.
We will connect better.
So, Paul, if you could maybe just give us a brief update?
Yeah, like you said.
Congratulations.
Thanks. So, like you said, we're just getting re-energized and so I was asked to join the Connect Committee recently and then we had the workshop, had a chance to meet with Peter. So, Peter was kind enough to give me some time a couple of weeks ago for us to go through what's happening with Connect and there's some exciting things happening there. So, what we ended up doing was I started, I was talking to Peter about some of the initiatives and, and plans for the Connect Committee and what they've been working on, but also I started drafting a SWOT analysis for the Connect Committee. I'm going to put that together over the next week or so and send it out. And also, by this time, by the time we meet again as a board, hopefully I've scheduled some sort of a meeting for our team to meet, if not in person, but virtually, you know, through WebEx or something like that. The idea is for us to be able to start communicating with each other and putting together some sort of plan and also make sure we're in agreement with the SWOT analysis to see what we need to prioritize. So, anyways, that's a, so not much happening yet, but stay tuned.
That's great. Look forward to your updates. Invets, do you want? Invast, do you want?
So I reached out to the chair of Invast and just asked for an update on activities or the inclusion of meetings.
Okay.
So we, I said I would meet with her if she would like, so she could kind of get me up to date.
Okay, great.
And we're out with everything.
Good.
Who's the chair?
Carrie James.
Oh, Carrie, that's right.
Yep, great. And then streamline, we've all heard lots about streamline over the past few months. And we, at the, our workshop, we talked about potential dates for having an informational forum. I don't think we decided on that yet, but I think we will be deciding. Can you help me out on that?
I had talked a little bit about possibly having one in December and one in January. And it seemed like the sense of the board not to have one in December. So we're still talking and still looking at that. I do think that the more we can get in front of the public to share with where we are and take their questions and have a conversation with them. Consolidation, by the way, for the people at home and here is looking, you may know, we are three districts. We have Amherst, Mount Vernon, and South Egan. We also have an SAU office. So there are four budgets. They're all color-coded at the SAU office, as people know. And one of the strong points of our strategic plan was to look at, can we consolidate to be more efficient and effective? So a streamline, that's the name of the pillar group, has really been looking at that and doing a, an outstanding job and a lot of work, lots of work, to come up with some ideas and thoughts about that. So we're going to continue. And what we want to do, what I would like to do, and I talked to the board on Tuesday night, is to go public and start to having, start having those conversations with the public about that. This is what we know. We don't have all the answers. We probably have more questions than we have answers. But I think to enjoin the public at this point would be a good idea. So hopefully we'll have a date set for January and we'll publicize that. Probably one in, in the theater here at South Egan and one in Mount Vernon to talk about consolidating the districts and why, and if not, why not? Hope that makes sense?
Yeah. And also as part of the workshop, it has been brought up that we need to determine if district consolidation is a potential strategy within our strategic plan to meet our goals. So that's a conversation that we will be having during our strategic planning workshop meetings over the next few months. Next, Unite, Beth?
We are kind of recharging the Unite pillar and we'll actually be meeting on Monday. It looks as though I will be co-chairing that committee with Sarah Lawrence, who is a school board member on the Mount Vernon School Board. And we felt that actually worked really well, you know, being able to do that together. So we're going to be meeting Monday for our first time as a new, you know, adjusted, sorry, dropped members, new members, and kind of getting things going. So I'll have a lot more at the next, at our next meeting.
Thank you. And Jim, I know I just threw you back on that committee, but.
Yes, so I've got our shift. But with Advance, we haven't met in a while yet, but David and I talked recently about getting together again. With kindergarten, I think where we need to go is outcomes. So we talked about that a little bit here, which is why I was asking Christine questions. Christine's also driving hard towards STEM. We've talked a great deal about STEM. Bethany Bariscony is working on the STEM curriculum. So we're moving ahead there. And I think that, Porter, you're, you're starting the process around world language, correct?
Correct.
So it's all good. I think the piece that's missing is, quite honestly, that we don't have, we don't have outcomes goals. We don't have outcomes goals. And I'm not comfortable personally moving forward on some of this stuff until we have outcomes goals, because I feel like you can, say you're going to have kindergarten, but unless you can measure the effectiveness and be able to determine whether or not it's working and apply the right resources, then you're just throwing a whole lot of resources after, you're chasing something that you don't know the answer to. So Dave and I talked about the next meeting about potentially putting our, put our energies toward that goal. So just so you know. Because we can't do it in a vacuum, we'll actually need you guys to tell us what that looks like. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, so next up, we have, it's that time of year when we get to be assigned to Amherst Ways and Bees committees for the budget. So I have a spreadsheet that we can pass around and you guys can sign up for your And I guess we can move on while you're taking a look at that to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the board? No? Okay.
Public comments on, we can do our personal quick.
You can say whatever you like. And there's, just to remind you, there's two public comments. There's one now and there's one later. Yep.
So it's Frank Brown, Amherst. I actually have sort of two comments on just the recent discussion. And I'll pick up on what Jim was saying in the conversation with Christine about, the point about how many, the average, on average, year to year, 50% or average. I get the sense, and I'll pick on you, and I don't intend to, but.
Feel free. I've been married, so I'm used to it. I am married, I should say. Sorry, Di.
You two get home, man. You get home after I come in my camera.
So I think one of the most important expectations I have of the board is for you to definitely set those expectations. And I heard you asking Christine, and I don't think you should be asking Christine. I think the board should be saying, we expect 66, 75% to pass that. That's what we were paying for as a town. That's what I would expect. You have to set that, but I think you should ask for it. The second thing with Christine was this, and I think it was Elizabeth's question about comparing town to town. Now, I know that we're no longer using Smarter Balance at the high school level. I thought we were still using it within the Amherst School District. Is that correct? And so that does provide year-to-year, town-to-town comparison within the state across three subjects, right? And so, I mean, and I think one is designed to measure absolute progress, the other is designed to measure sort of relative, at least at one point Christine explained it to me. And so if you wanted in-state, district-to-district measurements, it exists, it exists on the state portal and it exists across the subjects, year-to-year.
Part of the concern is, once we move over to PACE, especially at the middle school, that's going to be brought down. The, we're not going to be, once.
Not going to use Smarter Balance?
We will, but not as, not at every single grade level like it is right now.
Well, whatever grade levels you want. I mean, I think it's very important as you ask the question to say, how are we doing compared to town A, town B, town C? And is, does, does the results in the Smarter Balance reflect the scores you're getting in the PACE? I mean, as you move the pace, it's even, to me, more critical that you start looking at standardized tests across districts to see whether you're really getting the results that you were expecting to get. And that, how else are you going to get that? Other than, you're going to look at yourself and say, yeah, we did a good job and, you know, next year we did a better job. You know, if you don't compare yourself to somebody, you're never going to know that.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't compare. I'm just saying the method in which we use to compare at times is in, although we all take Smarter Balance, there are some districts out there that absolutely, I mean, I've talked to teachers of other districts that absolutely ridiculously teach to the test. Their kids have memorized the, you know, historical information and things like that. Whereas my understanding is, we don't do that. We teach. So there's, what I'm saying is, there's always been, I've heard the argument for years that, you know, it's, it's not always, you know, we can teach the test or we can just teach our kids. And that test isn't the only answer to who our children are.
I never said it was.
No, no, I'm not saying that you did. I'm just saying that that's why I was asking, is it, let's look at more than one option to compare our kids. That's all I'm saying.
What I'm saying is, that's the only option that gives you comparisons across different towns. And then you have to decide, what do you do with that information? And you need NIWA to look at too, and you need other metrics. I'm not arguing that. It's just one of a basket, but it's the only one that gives you the town-to-town.
I just wanted to ask Christine a clarifying question.
Yeah.
Would you mind coming up?
I think, I think the, the point that you make, Howard, is a good one. We've talked about this before, that.
Frank.
Sorry, Frank. Why did I call you Howard? Sorry.
He just called you Sam.
I just told my wife I wasn't married to her anymore, too. I think it's, I think it's a good one, Frank. You know, you, we've talked about that before. I think it's important, especially for people in the room, anybody watching, to understand. The reason I was asking Christine was, I think, even though that we should be saying we have a benchmark, we don't, we're, this is why I keep asking for key performance indicators, because, and that we need to decide what those key performance indicators are and hold ourselves accountable. Because I don't know whether I should say to her, make it 60% or make it 80% or make it 70%, because we're not at that, we're not at that point yet. So when we get ourselves to go through a process where we can establish goals with outcomes measures and put it on a KPI and hold ourselves accountable, I'll be able to say, 50% is not good enough, or 60% is not good enough. And then we'll be able, if, if they say, well, we can't hit it, then we'll be able to say, well, we need to, we need to resource appropriately so that we can either hit that measure or it decides it's too expensive and we can't do it, that type of thing. So I like that, think that's, think you're dead on with that. I just don't think that we're, we're not, unfortunately, we're not there yet, but I think we're, we're all in agreement. We've talked about, we have to, we have to get there and we have to get there sooner rather than later.
We're having the right conversations to get there.
Yep. Christine, I just wanted to ask with NIWA, my understanding is that's a nationally normed test?
It is, yes.
So that it does provide comparison? I know it may not provide comparison to specific communities within our area, but it does provide comparison.
Right.
So there is value to that. Maybe you could speak to that?
Yes.
And then in addition, we would, we have Smarter Balance now and perhaps in the future to a lesser degree with grades, but that will also provide specific comparison to districts within our local area, correct?
Yes. So first of all, NWEA MAP assessment is a norm reference, reference test. So you're not looking at a certain benchmark in each content area that students need to meet. You're actually looking, how did every single one of our students in this grade level perform compared to the norming population, which is a, probably one of the largest norming populations of any standardized assessment. So it's huge. About 10 million students actually take the NWEA, you know, across all grade levels, and they pull from all of that to grab their norming group. So it's norm referenced already, so the scores we're looking at, we look at the RIT scores, but we also look at the, you know, how that compares nationally, that RIT score. So you have that comparison built into when we actually share out scores. And we're usually always in the 90th, somewhere in the 90th percentile for each grade level. And it varies a little bit, but usually in that range. So nationally, comparing ourselves, you know, we're performing very well nationally.
Is that growth data or is that?
That's actually achievement data.
Achievement, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then we also have the growth data, which I was saying, typically our growth is at about 50 percentile, which is average growth. And it is, you know, it's because how they determine growth. Your most, unless students aren't growing enough, or if they're growing more than typical, you'll get growth measures above or below. But it's more rare to see, you know, growth levels, you know, very far above we have before. We've seen 70% growth, but it's a lot less often that we see that. So we do look at both the achievement level, how we compare nationally, and then we look at our growth measure. And our typical growth is 50 percentile, so we use that as our benchmark. The Smarter Balance assessment is a criterion-referenced assessment, which means that here's your benchmark, which is the Common Core State Standards, and how many of your students met that benchmark or exceeded, and how many students didn't meet. So we do have that, and that's achievement data. And then we do have comparison across districts that we can do. That was just released fairly recently, you know, the statewide data for Smarter Balance. So we do have that comparison built in. Once we move to PACE, we'll have the Smarter Balance data at grades three and four, ELA, fourth, third grade, MAP for fourth grade, then at grade eight, and then, you know, high school board using SAT. The other grade levels, we will have, we will be able to compare how our students did on the common performance task, as well as their year-long score for PACE, which is really a competency score. So we'll be able to compare that competency score with other districts that are involved in PACE. So we will be able to do some comparisons. It's just not a nationally normed assessment, which is the importance of keeping our NWEA to still have that nationally normed data.
And I believe we had talked about having you do a presentation next month?
Yes.
On that?
Yes.
We decided not this, not tonight, there was too much.
Yeah. So that's that deeper dig into PACE and what data you get and what the whole PACE project has shown so far, is I think what we had talked about doing.
Good.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? We're good? Okay. So consent agenda? Does anyone need to pull the minutes? No? Okay. And can I get a motion?
A motion? Oh, to approve the entire consent agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have to abstain.
Abstain? Okay, did you get that? Great, okay. Presentations and reports. We have the fiscal year '17 first quarter report. Adam?
Thank you.
Aaron?
As of the end of the first quarter, which ends September 30th, we're looking to be in fine shape. We project a surplus of about $118,000. It's a very, very conservative estimate since we're only through the first quarter and school had only been in session for a month at that point. We've not been through the winter yet. We don't know the extent of what the snow will be like and how much heat we'll use. Thank you. But all things look good so far. We have a deficit in transportation, you can see it there, but it's made up for some other things, primarily in turnover savings from our teaching staff over the summer. That's it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Adam? No? All right. Moving on to draft one of the budget. Adam again.
More good news. The fiscal year '18 budget is up, proposed budget is up 4.33%.
That's great. I'm kidding, obviously.
Project a little bit more? Yes, I will. Thank you. You want the, you want the proposed budget to be even larger?
Frank, we can take care of that in a second.
I usually love when you say hi, Frank. Let's get going.
You guys know you're competing with a fan that wants to host us.
This thing up here.
Thank you. We should move you all closer too.
Yeah.
Why are they so far?
Because of the screen.
So the proposed budget is up 4.33%, about a little under $1.1 million. Most of that is driven by nondiscretionary items that we don't have control over. So I've broken apart this chart into two sections to show the nondiscretionary items and then the discretionary items down below. And I'll spend just a couple of minutes on each part. You'll note that the nondiscretionary items will largely coincide with what ends up in the default budget calculation when we perform that later next month. The first thing's the miscellaneous items. That includes the $50,000 warrant article for capital reserve last year that went in for facility repairs. That shows us a decrease in the budget, which is an artifact of our budgeting process. Can be a little bit misleading, but that is a negative number. Bond debt went down $21,000, that's savings and interest for the bonds that are being paid off. Utilities, we show a small increase. That's going to grow a little bit because we got notice by Pennachuck today that they intend to raise their rates by 17.1% with the Public Utilities Commission. So we will be increasing our water budget for draft two, assuming that that goes through the PUC. Food service is a small increase, does not affect the tax rate. Transportation has a contractual increase of about $57,000 based on year three of the five-year contract that we have with our two transportation providers. The SAU assessment would be, this is what the Amherst share of the SAU budget would be if, if the draft one that was presented is passed by the SAU board. Professional services is largely for special education-related expenses. tuition for special education purposes is up significantly. And then the last two items, the largest increases, the New Hampshire retirement system resets its rates every two years, this is, will be the year, year one of that rate reset, which is a major increase for us. We have no, no ability to change that amount. And then health insurance, our health insurance rates are going up about 17.6%, and that's reflected in those rates, right there, for all of our current staff. All of that totals about $891,000 in nondiscretionary increases. The things that we do have control over, discretionary items down below, we've reduced our building and grounds budget by about $36,000. We are making a change in special education that will bring savings in occupational therapy and in behavioral supports for children. It involves adding staff, but reducing the services that we pay out of district for those staff as well, and has the added benefit of being able to provide additional services to students within our district. Our equipment budget, largely technology, is up $18,000. The supply section of our budget is up about $28,000. There's a nursing, a nursing position at AMS, it's a halftime position that was originally cut out of last year's budget, was subsequently brought back into the budget last year by action of the school board. If that position is remaining, as we intend it to remain, it needs to be budgeted. Science textbooks, we are looking to replace a resource for science textbooks for about $60,000. And then the largest single increase that we have is for an additional coaching position that would service both, both Clark Wilkins and Amherst Middle School. And for that, I would like for Christine to present a few, a little bit of additional information about that, if you will, Christine.
And Bethany.
Bethany will join her.
I do have a document that we're sharing around, and Bethany, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Bethany Brusconi, I'm the Dean of Instruction at Amherst Middle School.
Bethany works very closely with instructional coaches, so I thought both of our perspectives would be really helpful for you. As you might remember, last year, we had still three instructional coaches, and moving forward for this current school year, we did decide to reduce by one instructional coach. So this is the first year that we've been down to two instructional coaches, and we met with our coaches fairly early in the school year, and they've had a lot of struggle this year trying to plan a schedule that meets everybody's needs, and that works for everyone, and they feel that they're spread so thin this year that they're not effective. They're both pretty frustrated with, because they're such hard workers, and because they care so deeply about the teachers, they're actually feeling frustrated at this point in the school year that they're not able to work with all of the teachers that they want to, and they're not able to meet the teachers' needs. So we feel that by reducing that additional coach, we thought we would be able to, we have such dynamic and incredible instructional coaches, that it would work, but really looking at it so far this year, we're concerned about next year, and we're even concerned about, you know, this year, trying to help them manage, but what can we possibly put in place next year to support the coaching program? So Bethany, do you want to dug in or, okay. Our instructional coaches, our math coach is currently serving kindergarten through eighth grade, which is nine grade levels, working with over 1,200 students and 40 teachers. They work directly with teachers, but they're in the classroom, and they're doing model lessons, they're supporting teachers with resources, so they are having an impact on students. But to try to see 40 teachers in one week is impossible for them, and they're spread across three school buildings, which they've also found with that large of a number of teachers, and three different school buildings, that they're spending a lot of time, they'll be in one building on a certain day, but then they get an email or a phone call that a teacher needs them on a certain issue, or a question, or a problem, or they're stuck and need help and support, so they're leaving one building to go to the other to help and support that teacher. So they're feeling spread very thin, and kind of pulled in multiple directions this year, and really unable to create a schedule that supports all of the teachers. Last year, one of the reasons it worked okay, having Jen Eccleston spread across, we only assigned her to kindergarten through sixth grade, and we didn't, we didn't have her directly supporting seventh and eighth grade teachers, because they're already math content experts at that, the seventh and eighth grade level. Last year was our, I guess, fourth year of implementation of Math and Focus, and things were kind of status quo, but this summer, we made pretty significant changes in looking to more tightly align to the Common Core State Standards, and we changed our math curriculum, which we'll all be presenting on tonight. And Jen has really seen an increased need from teachers, with really a need for more direct support from her in implementing the new curriculum. So she's felt a change even this year, and she's felt spread even thinner this year than she was last year.
Just to jump in at that point, you know, when we looked at this with our coaches and looked at how the model is working now, and what the needs are, we always try to bring it back to our students. That has to be the central focus of all the decisions that we make, and how does their work impact students? I think an analogy that's really helpful when we're having this discussion to frame the whole lens of the conversation, is that a game of pool, and our coaches are making an impact, if you think about that cue ball hitting that rack of pool balls, and how that impacts, and that impact spreads throughout the game, our coaches are having that same kind of impact directly on students. If we were a district that was satisfied with being status quo, if we were a district that was okay being good, we wouldn't be having this conversation at all, but we're interested in being really great. We're interested in really providing the best education possible for our students, and so because of that, we've made tremendous changes in our curriculum, tremendous changes in the way we assess, and because of that, we're also making tremendous changes in what instruction looks like in the classroom. So all of those things are really bringing this issue to light for us.
Yeah. And when we met with our coaches and said to them, you know, what would support you, how could we make some shifts or changes next year, what would that require? And we really looked at, first of all, we've called them coaches, and I think that doesn't really explain the work that they do, they really are curriculum specialists, and they do such a deep level of work with curriculum, and also with instruction, that we felt like the name change would be an important piece, too, and that we would actually need three curriculum specialists for next year, instead of two instructional coaches. And Liz Manolis felt really strongly that because she's taught all content areas, and many grade levels, that she really could take all sixth through eighth grade, and work with all of those teachers, so all content areas, and she would be comfortable handling that. It would be 22 teachers, actually half the number of teachers that she currently works with, but all content areas, so it would expand her role a little bit. We talked about making this change, where Jen has actually serviced grades K through six, that that shift and change has been really instrumental in supporting the transition from fourth grade to fifth grade, and she would love to continue to work with fifth grade. So if she moved K5 as a curriculum specialist, and then we had another curriculum specialist to cover a more focus on literacy, where Jen would continue focused really on the math and the science. So it's cutting down, they're each servicing 33 teachers, which isn't, doesn't seem like significantly less than the 40, but because it's math, science only, and there's still that support with literacy and social studies, it would definitely be more manageable. And if you're really looking at the number of students that they're ultimately responsible for, it is significantly decreasing that number to make it more manageable. I wish I could say I was in classrooms on a daily basis, working with teachers, I'm not, there's no way for me to be. And really, our, our current coaches, they're the boots on the ground, supporting our teachers through all of the instructional decision-making that they're doing around curriculum and around assessment. And they're, they play such a key role in helping support change, we felt like this was something that was important for us. We're concerned that the coaches won't be able to continue to be effective in their roles, and that they ultimately may request to go back to the classroom, because we've created positions that aren't quite manageable for them. And in looking at, you know, we were going over, why has this become so challenging with our coaching positions? And we kind of looked back over the past few years, and we just made a list of the changes that we've made over the past few years, and are in the middle of making, and it's pretty significant, the change that we've asked of our teachers, so, and really some structural changes. So we've reduced two instructional coaching positions, we reduced the Assistant Director of Curriculum position, both positions that were pretty deeply embedded in what teachers were doing on a daily basis. With our strategic plan, many of the initiatives in the strategic plan are related to curriculum or instruction. Our common reporting system, we've been making huge shifts this year, especially at AMS, around grading, and what does that look like? And teachers need support through that, you know, Liz Manolis gave us a perfect example. She was working with teachers on performance assessment that they were, they created, and they said they were struggling, and they invited her in to look at the performance assessment and to help them with it, and she started asking them a number of questions, and she realized that there was a lot of pre-work that the teachers hadn't done yet with the students, and they had kind of jumped over that step, probably in this enthusiasm to try out a performance assessment, there were some formative assessment pieces that had been skipped over. And if Liz wasn't there, that was one of the phone calls she got when she was over at Wilkins one day, and saying, we're stuck, can you come help us? So really looking, having almost someone who's a little outside the experience, being able to really look in, and someone who's an expert in curriculum and in instruction and assessment, to really be able to help guide the teachers. In looking at our strategic plan, in addition to grading and reporting, our rigorous academic standards, we've made a pretty significant change with our standards, but also looking at work-study practices, and we're asking our teachers to try out, you know, how might you instruct students on these 21st century skills, how might you assess them? And incorporating those into our curriculum and into our assessment, our competency-based assessment model, so our performance assessments, our work around STEM, which Jen was deeply involved in last year, she went and did STEM lessons in every single classroom at Wilkins last year, she's not able to do that this year, and she told us that, that the teachers, because of our change with our curriculum, she's focused only on math and can't support STEM anymore as she did last year. Implementation of full-day kindergarten, we, because of full-day K, we have our instructional coaches one full day at Clark, which, that means they get to see every kindergarten teacher every week, but it also spreads them thinner with the other teachers. So really, our alignment to new standards, the need for this deeper content knowledge and understanding of these instructional shifts is really what our coaches spend their time doing. And with all of the new curriculum changes and updates, especially with literacy and with math, the teachers have required more support to implement these new changes. Even with teacher leader effectiveness and with our new teachers, many new teachers will come up to the coaches and ask them to come in, just to be reflective and be able to provide feedback to them. Sometimes they'd like coaches coming in before, and administrator comes in to observe them, to just really begin to understand that tool a little bit deeper, and to be able, begin to understand what that experience might be like, having an administrator come in to do a formal observation on them, so they're often called for those pieces. We've also made some pretty significant changes with our late starts. A few years ago, our late starts were still very productive and really important time, but it wasn't always focused on one thing. Last year, we made a shift where we, and it's really around performance assessment, we focused all of our late starts on that, and often we're saying, you know, I'll say to Bethany, I need Liz over at Wilkins, you can't have her for the late start, and vice versa, we end up arguing over the instructional coaches and who gets them for our late starts. So really more, you know, directed and focused late starts on pretty deep content, there's that need for those curriculum specialists. And even our new mentoring program, we had our mentor facilitators come to us and say, hey, how do we address this issue or that issue? And we said, it's your instructional coaches, those are your go-to people for that support for those new teachers. So we've put a lot on our coaches, because they're so strong and do such good work, and we have so many changes that we've made, just within the past few years, but I think we've created positions that aren't really manageable for them, and I worry it's going to start to have an impact on the teachers, and ultimately on the students. Bethany, I don't know if, anything else?
Well done.
Okay. So this is the first time we wanted to present this to you, we know this might be a little bit of a surprise to you, it's not something that we anticipated, and we're happy to come back to speak to you at future, you know, next month's board meeting, or if there's additional information, we'd love to bring the instructional coaches. Liz is actually at Stanford University right now, at a deep course that she applied to be part of, around performance assessment. So she couldn't be here tonight, so we didn't want to bring both Jen and Liz here, and we wanted to share this with you first, and that would certainly be a good next step, to hear from them, the work that they're doing, and, you know, more about their role and why it's challenging. Jim, I remember last year, at one of our board meetings, we were talking about some of the, we were talking about NWEA scores, and then one of the shifts we made in our scope and sequence, really our math curriculum, and you asked me a perfect question, you said, how do you know, like, here's this piece of paper, how do you know the teachers are actually implementing it? And I told you, I don't, and I can't, that's the role of our instructional coaches, I don't have time. And it made me, you know, recognize at that meeting, first of all, the important role that our instructional coaches play, but how, you know, it's difficult to understand what an instructional coach does. And I think often, many districts have different positions, instead of having instructional coaches. For example, Bedford, they have K8 curriculum coordinators, and then 912 curriculum coordinators for content areas, so it's more at the SAU level, but they're doing the similar work that our coaches are doing, which is one of the reasons we felt like this name change was important, because people don't really understand what the role of an instructional coach is, but they're really acting as a curriculum specialist, as other districts have those roles, and we don't have them.
Thank you both.
Any questions?
So this year, it's just split with you, so last year, was Mrs. Eccleston doing, was she doing math and science for K through?
She was doing, yeah, math and science for K6, but we didn't have significant changes to our curriculum, so she felt she could handle both of those.
I mean, because, yeah, I see the numbers are a lot lower, but then they'll still be going to?
To three buildings.
So does that, does that still make sense, to still go to that third school just for one?
You know, in conversations, we think it's really important. It's such a team effort on all of these fronts, to really talk to them and find out what the experience is currently. The transition between fourth grade and fifth grade is such a crucial piece, to really have it feel seamless for students, and really ensure that students aren't, that their learning is a logical progression, and so the coaches both felt really strongly that that bridge was one of the best pieces of their job, and that we should really look for ways to preserve that. It is still spreading them across the buildings, and we said that to them, we said.
It is a lot less, it's the teachers.
It is.
But that might make it easier to be able to make a schedule and say, I'm really, I'm in a school this day.
Yeah, and what Jen did last year, she spent one day at the middle school, this year she's spending two days, and she's feeling that second day away from Clark Wilkins, plus the extra time in kindergarten, where it's really throwing her balance off, and her need to be able to support all teachers. And if you think about our increase in the number of new teachers, I think that's also having an impact on our instructional coaches.
All right. So the rest of our budget is largely flat compared to last year, and that's because our enrollment looks to be largely flat. We projected, based on October 1 numbers, a decrease of about seven students, but as you heard earlier this evening, we already are plus 10 from our October 1 numbers from this year. So we expect our enrollment to be largely flat. Some important things that are not included in this budget. One of the strategic planning pillars includes mention of world language, K through 12. We have not addressed that in this budget, we've not included a world language program of any kind for our elementary schools in this, in this budget. We've also not included any raises for teachers or paraprofessionals that are covered under collective bargaining agreements, because both of those groups are in negotiations right now, and two of our members are, those members are here this evening. And so those will be coming forward to you separately as warrant articles. We've also not included any non-union salary increases as of yet, leaving that to board direction for us. So with that, we know that from here, this budget goes through the Ways and Means Committee, we'll come back to you in December for your review and input, and then we'll move along through the public process, starting on January 11th, 2017. But with that, that's our introduction to the budget, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Adam. Questions from the board?
So, wow.
So, wow. I don't even know how this is sustainable.
Yeah.
I'm looking at this, and we talked about this last year, and I thought we did a fairly good job telling the story last year about how, the whole budget, how much of that pie do we actually have control over? Once again, not much. And the majority, the vast majority of the increase is stuff that we don't have control over. The largest item that we do have control over, I'm hearing that we desperately need. But even that, compared to the overall budget, is not a significant, you know, it's not a significant percentage of the overall budget. And I'm concerned, I'm concerned, because we're going to need this budget passed, and I'm concerned about how do we make sure the public is well-informed that, how do we tell our story about why this budget's important to pass? And it's, I think part of it is, is basically where we were at last year, which is that even if we go to a default budget, it's not going to change all that much, simply because the vast majority of the increase is something we have no control over in the first place.
The default budget's going to be $891,154 more.
More, no matter what?
No matter what.
Yeah.
So when I, I had asked Adam, when you were putting this together, I asked Adam, I said, "Look, if we're going to be, if this is going to be a surprise to us, can you show us, can you put together some numbers that would show us how we would be able to offset any major increases that we would experience, that we may or may not have control over? Were you able to, were you able to put something together?"
Well, yes. So if we wanted to change the dynamic of this school district in some drastic ways by making cuts over some things that we generally take for granted as being untouchable, there are things that we could do. These are, for example, we have class size right now of 21.7 kids, K through eight. If we reduced a teacher at every grade level, grades one through eight, that would save $665,000 and raise class size by three students per class.
So we go from, what is it, 21 now to?
21 or 22-ish.
To 25 or more?
Yeah, 21.6 to 24.7.
Did you say reduce a teacher by every grade?
Yeah, grades one through eight.
And that's assuming we don't have even more kids joining.
Correct. I didn't include kindergarten in that, because kindergarten's already at 25 as it is.
Twenty, twenty, twenty.
Yeah, we can't, we can't vary, can't even, can't touch kindergarten.
So that's $665,000 roughly. Other things.
How much?
Six sixty-five. We could potentially look at reducing the number of buses that pick up kids and drive them to school. That would result in longer bus rides for everybody, but would save about $55,000 a bus. There are other things that folks would probably won't even want mentioned, like thinking about athletics at the middle school, things like that. So there's a number of things.
How much would saving athletics at the middle school, you were trying to run the numbers on that?
It'd be about $100,000.
So if we reduce the number of buses, when, I know we haven't done any type of deep dive into what that would look like, but do we have, you're saying it was 15,000 per bus?
Yeah, but every bus is about $55,000 next year.
But we're not sure how many buses we would be able to reduce at this point?
Well, there's a, there's a requirement in the RSA's to transport every student to school who lives at least two miles from the school. There is no requirement on the length of that bus ride, and less buses mean longer bus rides.
Right.
And the number of buses we have now is more as a result of the distance in town and the time it takes to pick up kids and the number of kids that can fit on a bus.
Right.
That's why most of our buses don't appear jam-packed full of students. It's because it takes roughly 45 to 50 minutes to go to every part of town and get back by the time school starts and vice versa.
Can we try to adjust where the bus stops are? You know, I mean, even, you know, try to consolidate a little bit. You know, I get stuck behind, it's actually our bus, because I bring my daughter to school every day. I get stuck behind our bus going all the way up 122, and I see the frequent stops. Some of them are only a couple houses away. Granted, I, I mean, I live on 122. I get the fact that you don't want your kids walking. But at what point can we say, you know, ask our parents to, you know, especially at the lower grade levels, ask them to drive them? I mean, it's, you know, if they don't want to walk their child, you know, across 122 or up or whatever, which I get, drive them a couple houses so that we can consolidate a little bit more.
Well, we are, we're responsible for ensuring safe bus stops. And that's why on busy roads like 122, we would, that's why there's frequent stops there. Whereas in other neighborhoods, there are less frequent stops. So every stop adds between 30 and 45 seconds per, to each route. So the fewer stops you have, the shorter the routes. That's fairly common. But in some cases, you don't have a lot of options when it comes to busy roads.
And I'm sorry, you said, I mean, the middle school sports would, save how much?
About $96,000. Well, I said 100, about 100,000.
Is that all? What was the transportation number?
About $55,000 a bus.
Is there, this might be a question for Peter. Peter, is there anything at the middle school that's considered to be? Let me ask two questions. First one is.
Let me think of it first.
All right, hold on. How much, how much of a sense do you have, like, what's our guess, given what's going on in healthcare, this is going to be a one-time blip? What do we think about that?
Well, three things drove our rates this year. Those three things were higher than normal costs for high-cost claimants. We had more very sick people in the past, in the rating cycle than normal. The second was prescription drugs, went up much higher than was anticipated, and there were things related to the Affordable Care Act that increased rates.
Okay. New Hampshire retirement system, what's happening there?
Pardon me?
The New Hampshire retirement system, are they kicking back a greater percentage back to municipalities, or why is that going up? Or is it just?
Well, believe it or not, the amount that employees pay towards their retirement, which every employee contributes 7% towards their future retirement costs, that largely covers the cost of their future retirement. The employer-paid portion, which is going up to 17.36%, is, most of that goes to pay off the unaccrued actuarial liability from years past, when money that was destined for the retirement system was repurposed to other things. And the state is in a, is in year seven of a 30-year amortization period to pay off that UAAL. And so we are 22, 23 more years out, paying those exorbitant rates.
So you said that's going up to 17.6 this year?
It's going up to 17.36% from 15.8 something, I think.
And is that percentage going to keep increasing, or is?
It will stay the same for the next two years, and depending on how the funds held in the, NHRS's coffers fare, and based on their updated actuarial analysis that they're going to perform, not this summer, but next summer, it could go down, or it could go up again. The trend has been, it's been going up significantly. And if, if this was the Board of Selectmen, they'll, they would be hearing even worse news about what they're going to be paying for firemen and police officers. It's significant, significantly increased. So it's likely to continue increasing, but it's possible it could flatten out.
So, just following along, can you explain a little more deeply the special education out-of-district tuition, and why we're having an increase in that?
Yeah, a couple of reasons. First, we project, based on the students that we know about, and what we think it's going to cost us for their out-of-district tuition. Every school district is required to pay that, that cost. And the State of New Hampshire Department of Education approved for every out-of-district provider, a 10% rate increase. So all of those providers have increased the rates by 10%, and we have to pay that. It's not a negotiated amount on our behalf. When the placement team decides on a placement for a student, that's a, that's a done deal. It becomes a financial obligation of the district.
The state legislature, legislature approve that?
No.
Who approved that?
The Department of Education.
So they will get a call tomorrow. What, so the other question I was going to ask too, with this whole thing, is, is there, so this is just hypothetical, because I need to get my, my brain wrapped around this. Is there, this is a question for Peter. Is there, given all of the things we want to do, it's kind of a two-parter, given all the things we want to do, we've got world languages, we've got STEM, we've got, there are things that we consider to be absolutely educationally essential. Is there anything in the middle school that's considered to be nonessential? Things that we want, nice to have.
And Clark Wilkins.
And Clark Wilkins, sorry. I have a kid in the middle school, so I'm sorry, I probably want to think my opinion would be.
As you asked that question, my head was, my eyes were going around both schools, thinking, what would be nonessential? We certainly are at a pivotal point here, and we've talked as a leadership group about the kinds of things now we have to look at, with the kinds of costs we're looking at. So kind of, we're at a, I wouldn't say a drastic step here, but we're pretty close. We're talking about, you know, cutting a staff member out of each grade. So we have to look at everything. We cursorily looked at these things, had a discussion about those, and put these forward. I think we really even now have to have a second conversation about, with principals, about what else. I would hate to get to a point where we say arts, music, library, you know, notice I said, I hate to get to that point. Being an Hampshire Council for the Arts, I'm hoping none of my colleagues are watching because I'm saying this, but, and so you'll know, we had a meeting this morning, and three superintendents were there, we had a meeting at RSCC, and they're talking about, you could, you could tune into any school district in New Hampshire right now, so that the costs that we're looking at are exorbitant, and all boards are having these kinds of conversations.
Across the state?
Across the state.
Well, just those three items, it's over $750,000. Just those three that we highlighted, that we have zero control over.
And some are in a lot more dire straits than we are, but this is something that we need to talk about, have conversations with the public, like we're having tonight, with the board and with ourselves. This isn't going away. It's getting worse, and we have to deal with it in a thoughtful, structured, overtime way. And I'm not saying we're putting it off, I'm saying we want to be clear and deliberate and strategic, I think, so. I don't have an answer for you right now, Jim, but I think, I think our principals too are a little bit, oh-my-gosh mode. So we need to kind of regroup a little bit and talk some more, and try and sharpen the pencil, but as you can see, we're only dealing with a small pieces, the small pieces of that pie, and we have to draw from that pie. So it's tough, but we need to have those conversations.
I'm looking at just back of the napkin, and if we increase our, our class size well beyond what we plan to, if we reduce three buses, which, and we're already at bus times of 55 minutes or more, and if we get rid of all the middle school sports, we're still, that's what it would take just to offset the nondiscretionary stuff we have absolutely no control over. That's, that's what it'd take just, just to cover that. And that's not even covering the stuff we, that we went over today, that, you know, Christine was saying that we need. So that's, you know, that's, that's where we're at. I mean, I look at that, and I think we have to decide, we talk about, you know, having a target, because you can't hit a target unless you've defined it, and, you know, what, what kind of system do we want to be? What's most important for us to provide? And then from there, say, we need the public to support that, that vision, that belief of the students we want to, the services we want to provide our students, and therefore it is worth not removing all the sports in the middle school. It is worth not having our students sitting on buses for more than an hour. It is worth making sure our students have a good experience in the classroom, because they are not competing with yet even more students. And I think that's going to be a tough, a tough thing, some tough decisions have to be made, but I think we have to decide what we want, what we, what we need to do.
This doesn't even include other things.
Correct.
Yeah. You know, another board member had, you know, been talking a couple years about having, like, a contingency, you know, and any kind of, any surplus, you know, a certain amount of, any surplus we would run in a given year would go to a contingency that we could draw from, we run into these types of situations. And typically, what we've done is given the money back to the taxpayer, which I think in, in, on the face of it, being a taxpayer myself, sounds great, but it's, I don't even run my own household like that, you know? Like, I don't give any extra income, I give it back to my employer. So, I mean, I have a savings account. So I mean, is it, is it time to have, start having a conversation around having that type of thing and putting it before the voters on a warrant article?
I don't think I can address that.
Yeah, a couple things. First, frankly, this budget doesn't even fully protect the district's downside liability for unanticipated cost. We don't have anything built in for future capital needs. We don't have anything built in for unanticipated special education costs that we may not anticipate. I know there's some expendable trust funds and some availability and those sort of, capital reserve funds as well, but generally, the board should be looking at, what are our capital expenses over the next 20 years, and how are we preparing to meet those needs? We're not at that point to even address those things yet, to mitigate future spikes in the potential tax rate. But to your point about setting funds aside, the district is able to set aside up to 2.5% of its net assessment, which this year was about $21 million, so 2.5% of that, about 500 grand, could be set aside for something that you, you mentioned before. It would require approval by the voters at a district meeting to authorize the use of that. Those funds couldn't be used without another vote of the district meeting. So voters, we, the school board couldn't just decide, "Well, we want to, we want to buy new band instruments." It would require a separate vote of the district meeting, or in an emergency authorization by the Commissioner of Education to spend those funds. So other, other considerations.
So there are protections built in?
There are.
To protect the taxpayer?
Yeah.
Okay.
And like you said, would, so this is drastic and pretty dramatic, and the, was that saying the exact same thing? But the, I mean, we talk about, you know, what comes out of negotiations, what comes out, is not considered as well as, or non-union wage increases, or, you know, like you said, unanticipated special education costs for language. These are things that not even considered in the, in the discussion so far.
Correct. Correct.
So, so we have, this coming month, obviously, to come back to December, but we, we have a lot of thinking to do and a lot of conversations to have, and keep Amy involved in all that stuff, between now and next meeting, certainly with the advisory, the Ways and Means Committee. So presenting that is a little dire, but we, we have some, obviously have some work to do, and we're up for it, but it's, it'll be difficult. We'll bring some other options to you again next time, once we have a chance to work together and figure it out. Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to presentation report, math curriculum. Christine?
Need to clone Christine, I think.
You aren't gone that already? I thought you were already working on.
I tried, they called me and said, "Can't do that."
It's, it's part of the things that wasn't included in the budget plan.
I have the math curriculum to share it, and I will talk about the process. It's a really lengthy document, so I only made six copies to try to save some trees. So.
I don't remember, is it included?
It's not in the packet. I always, yeah, I can send it electronically too. I always worry if I put this in the packet, you'll spend a lot of time, like, reading through it, and you have a whole month to look at it. So that's why I wanted, that's why I didn't include it in the packet.
I always, yeah, I can send it electronically too. I always worry if I put this in the packet, you'll spend a lot of time like reading through it and you have a whole month to look at it, so that's why I wanted, that's why I didn't include it in the packet. So, our math curriculum work, after, we had talked a little bit last year at a school board meeting, which I even referenced, about, I had a copy for Peter if he, or Adam, if he.
I'm also.
Okay. So, in our implementation of Math in Focus after, especially after our first year of Smarter Balance, we realized that there were places, we were using Math in Focus, you know, we had a scope and sequence guide to support how we use that resource, but we were using it as really more of a resource where we were going through nearly cover to cover with that book. And we always knew that that resource was above standard, but until, and it was actually Jen Eccleston who was watching the students take Smarter Balance and really noticed some of the trends on that assessment and recognized the need to make sure that content that, for example, was in second grade but a third grade standard, that content maybe is more appropriate in third grade, so should it get moved to third grade? Or do we do a quick review in third grade? Or what are the terms that we're using and how are those terms similar or different in the standard? So, there had been a lot of conversations, especially after our first year of Smarter Balance, around math and what changes we need to make to better align to standards. So, we put some changes in place last year, but then this summer we felt strongly about really tackling a curriculum and creating a math curriculum. So, really in starting our fifth year in Math in Focus and the need to really more tightly align to standards, we really, you know, that, that's what prompted us to go ahead and spend a week with our math teachers this summer writing our math curriculum. One other important piece, when we have a textbook, often the textbook is what is taught and sometimes teachers and students lose sight of teaching math because they're worried about coverage and trying to get through that whole book. When, if you actually look at the alignment to standards, there might be sections of that book that you don't need to cover or only need to cover if time allows. So really shifting your focus and looking more at the concepts that teachers are teaching and looking at those enduring understandings and those essential questions, what students should know for the rest of their lives about math and how you can actually present it where students are really trying to uncover the answer to that essential question while they're learning that concept. So, shifting our focus away from only a math book to really having this curriculum document that, that guides, helps to guide our teachers. The other piece is performance assessment. As we've moved forward, using more and more performance assessments, we felt like taking time to create our curriculum document and then align assessments to it, especially performance assessments would be an important piece. In addition, at many grade levels, we looked at what grade level competencies would fit in with our curriculum as well as our work-study practices. In some grade levels, we're able to get a little bit deeper into their work, similar to literacy, you know, this is a first chance to, to get this curriculum document done this summer, but it's something that we'll be working with throughout the year and probably adding to and most likely revising next summer, and we would probably bring it to you again. And really allowing, having a curriculum allows us to still use Math in Focus as our primary resource, but if there's another great strategy or another great resource or material, being able to share that out with the grade level, that a curriculum document actually ensures consistency across the classrooms because teachers who have these great ideas will be able to add it to the document so that all teachers are using that great idea, if it is a great idea. And if it's something that doesn't fit in, then making that decision as a grade level that doesn't fit in, and this is what we're going to do instead. So our goals, we're really completing this grade level, you know, this curriculum document by grade level. And I did want to share with you, kindergarten since, and similar to literacy, kindergarten didn't meet during our math week because they had a, a week for full day kindergarten this summer. We did a little bit of work around our math curriculum at that time, but it was actually Jen Eccleston who wrote the kindergarten math curriculum. So she took it upon herself, she taught kindergarten and she loves it, this work. So she wrote the kindergarten math curriculum, then presented it to the teachers, got feedback from them on the first in-service day, then made changes, and then she also met with them on this past in-service day to continue working on the math curriculum. So, that was our only difference, each other grade level had at least one Amherst teacher rep, sometimes even more than that. Our goal was to have one Amherst, one Mont Vernon working on the, the math curriculum. So they really, the goal was to create this curriculum document, but it was also to look at some performance assessments that we already have. Math in Focus actually just recently created performance tasks, there are more tasks than deep assessments, and our teachers didn't have time, since that was a new resource, to really dig in and look at those performance assessments and determine which units to use them in, and then which units to use exemplars, which is a resource we purchased a few years ago, which are mini-performance tasks. So they got a chance to really dig into both of those and align them to our units, especially that needed to happen with exemplars. Exemplars are created for a grade band, so for example, we have like 75 performance tasks for all of K-2, and we have to decide, you know, where that task fits best in that, so we had a chance to do that. We also had a discussion around our Math in Focus chapter tests. So, for some of them, like first grade has always struggled a little with our Math in Focus chapter test, they're about six pages long. That's a lot for a first grader, especially in the beginning of the year, and they found that they were just so time-consuming and that there, it would be better if they actually broke that assessment up into more smaller formative assessments. So, conversations like that happened during this week. We also talked about seventh and eighth grade and around acceleration and what that scope and sequence or curriculum document might look like. We didn't have a chance to fully finish the compacted Common Core seven curriculum and then the compacted Common Core eight curriculum, because it's the same teachers, so they worked on the regular one and they know their pacing and how they would move from one to the, the next. But we also had some great discussions around, you know, putting something in place for acceleration to be a little more seamless, so if students at the end of sixth grade didn't have the, you know, weren't at that time ready to enter the accelerated pathway, that there'd be multiple opportunities for them to enter that accelerated pathway. So we had some great conversations around that. And then you can see our agenda for what our week looks like. What worked really well, we had so much work going on this summer, it was actually hard to get teachers at all of our work because they were busy, some were working our Title I summer program, some were working our ESY program, and then we had curriculum writing happening throughout the summer. So we chose one week and it happened to overlap with ESY and Title I, but those programs don't happen on Mondays and Fridays and then, and they only happen in the mornings. So what we did was we decided to make it really flexible for the teachers, that they could choose during that week when they wanted to work. They were given up to three full days to work and they set their schedule, it had to be the same across that grade level. So for example, if there were two or three second grade teachers, they all had to be there on the same days working together, but that they could come and go fluidly as they needed to based on their schedules and other obligations, which worked really well. I think if we had just three set days and that was it, we wouldn't have as many people and we would be missing some grade levels. So that flexibility actually worked really well and it was great because everyone was there all day Monday. Jen and I were able to present to the group, share out the work, what it would look like, do a little professional development around understanding by design, which is the model we use for curriculum writing, and then allow them just to, to dig in. And actually, Amy McWiggin was in the area and she even popped over, she's our math coach at South Heagan, and she popped over because was, she was excited about some of the conversations we were having and she wanted to check in on eighth grade, and so that was a nice addition, she even participated with us. So, it went really well, Jen and I were able to move fluidly between those groups and since groups were kind of coming and going, it actually was less people working on any given day, which was easier for Jen and I to support. So that flexibility worked really well for that. So that Tuesday through Friday was pretty flexible. And then we have, very similar to literacy, our similar curriculum framework for what work the teachers actually did and how they started with unit titles, timeframes, but they looked at what those enduring understandings and big ideas, essential questions and so on, looking at alignment to standards, to making sure that that, that they were tightly aligned. And something that Jen Eccleston did, she, after this work was done, she took every single unit and she is, you know, she knows math and the standards much deeper than I do. She went through every single framework and looked at the alignment to standards, looked at where there might be some redundancies, where there might be some gaps, and actually emailed every single group of teachers, every grade level for them and gave them points of revision for them to revise on the in-service day, the August in-service day. So this work was pretty deep work that happened that week and Jen was a tremendous help in supporting this, but she also did work after to really go through and share with teachers those points of revision so that our curriculum document was really high quality, which was an important step. Adam, can you go ahead and ask? So again, our framework very similar to our others ones, and you heard from literacy, just that importance to have, that it's standards-based, a common experience for students, and that we're really looking at that progression K-8, which is an important piece. Similar to literacy, we have that unit plan guide, but for our math work, Jen and I actually created one that was math-based, so all of the examples were math. So when, if teachers were stuck on developing essential questions, they could go to that guide or checklist almost to help them, to produce them, but also in our OneNote, which we used for our curriculum writing, just like we did for literacy, we had resources built in. So if they were stuck, we had already pulled resources for them and said, oh, well, here's a good website to go to with sample essential questions if you're stuck on that piece. So you can see in our OneNote what our math curriculum framework looks like, we had that overview page with our agenda, but then also multiple resources were below, and then what the curriculum framework looks like in our OneNote. So, really good work that happened that week and tremendous support from Jen in really moving us forward and looking at the document on both of our in-service days, which was really helpful, to have those days a chance to really check in on the curriculum and make any revisions or changes that needed to happen. Any questions? I know, and we're not looking.
This is like, wow.
Yeah. And there are places, you know, we still, there are some grade levels that didn't get to aligning their competencies, and the important thing, you know, Jen could have gone through and added in those competencies, but then the teachers at that grade level don't internalize the competencies, they're just listed there. Part of this is not just the finished document, but the work that the teachers had to do, and so many of them spoke about how deeply they understood the work now, how deeply they understood the standards and the different, you know, how the competencies fit in and the different concepts. So, really valuable.
So Christine, this is year four of Math in Focus, right? Or is this year five?
It's year five.
Year five?
Because next year is year six, which is the last year of our online access for Math in Focus.
Oh, okay.
Which we'll have to budget for, for the next year.
So I'm wondering, what, what's your sense of how this has progressed in terms of comfort level with the teachers?
Yeah.
Because it was, you know, new in the beginning and while we have new teachers coming in, do you feel that the veteran teachers are comfortable helping the new teachers understand this program? And I'm just wondering what your general sense is with that?
Yeah.
It was quite an adjustment.
It was. And I think it was really important, one thing I wanted to share with curriculum, when you have, when you're implementing a new resource, you often need at least a year or two just to, to use it cover to cover, to get to know that resource, to implement it that way, and then start looking at, you know, what changes might we make? And we did that all along with our scope and sequence documents, where we might move a chapter from one location to another, or we might start with another grade level resource or material, and we had our scope and sequence guides. But once we had been through year four, we felt that there were two pieces, you know, one, the teachers certainly were very comfortable with the resource and knew the resource inside out and backwards. So that was a really good place to be, because then you can be even more flexible with how you use it. And it's still a primary resource, but it's much easier for teachers to be making some of those changes. But we did notice that, I, I think the one challenge with Math in Focus is the lack of alignment to standards, which we're aware of, when we knew really purchasing this resource, it was above standard. But I think at the time, we didn't recognize that our students were not even at standard yet, because those standards are, the Common Core State standards are rigorous. So bringing them up to standard, we had a transition document that actually allowed us to do that, but as we continued with Math in Focus, we felt like there were places where, for example, in third grade, it goes really deeply into content, even, especially in the beginning of the year, and it's around place value and number sense, which is really important, but it goes so deep in, it goes into fourth and even fifth grade standards, and then there's less time for multiplication, and we need to be spending a good chunk of our time on multiplication. So we made some changes, chapters one, two, and three, we're not teaching the entire chapter, we're teaching portions of that chapter in third grade, but not the entire, each of those entire chapters, because it goes so deeply, and it's not, it wasn't in a way that actually allowed our students to tackle really challenging content that was exciting and rigorous, it was more that they felt like they were rushing through and trying to cover everything, so it wasn't effective going above standard. So we really have to look at the places where it's, it's effective for us to be going above standard and challenging our students and where it makes sense for us to kind of slow down, deepen understanding at the level of the standard so that later on we can go above standard.
So two questions. How, how good do you feel about this curriculum being aligned with the standards?
It's very, yeah.
And two, how good do you feel about the pacing across the district?
At each grade level, you mean?
Yeah.
And do you mean this year or, or in general? Like how it's?
Yeah, last year and this year, like, how is it moving along?
Yeah. So I'm feeling really good about this curriculum, especially because I had Jen's expertise with the standards. So this is very tightly aligned to standards and I think, you know, a year of implementation will let us know also as we go through, you know, what worked, what didn't work. So that will be an important piece, but I'm confident that this is really, and the teachers know that they're covering the standards now. Before, we handed them a textbook and said, here, teach this, teach the textbook, and if they were making, they may have been making some decisions to omit things or to go deeper into things where that may or may not have been aligned to standards. When you get the teachers in the room creating their own curriculum, they know the standards inside out and backwards. So not only am I confident that the document is tightly aligned, but also that our teachers have a deeper understanding of the standards. As far as pacing, I think it's going to go much better this year. It's been a challenge each year, I think, you know, across the grade level, and it's something I actually just talked to Jen yesterday about this, I asked her with pacing, and she said with some grade levels, it's still more of a challenge. And it, it often will be teacher personality that they're afraid to move on unless every single student is with them.
Master.
Yes, and we've, so Jen has ongoing conversations with teachers about that, and while you hate to feel like you're leaving a student behind, they're going, they're going to see it again and they're going to come back to it. So we, we do try to remind teachers of that. So pacing is always a challenge, I think this is more reasonable, this curriculum document, than just the Math in Focus book and feeling like you have to get through the whole book. So I think this is more realistic, so I think it will allow teachers to be better on pace, but you still need that support from someone looking at, you know, where is each grade level and how is it going?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good.
And I'll come next month for approval.
Yes. Actually, why don't you stay?
Oh, yeah.
Because we're going to switch the, there's no discussion items under informational, we're going to have, you go ahead and give the ESSA and data dashboard update.
Okay.
It's not showing up in the packet the right way, the pages are blank for some reason.
Okay. I have what it's supposed to look like, but I, do you have it? Oh. And, do you have it, Amy?
Like this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have one.
So, I apologize for our audience, we won't have it for them to see, but this is pretty quick, it's really just informational. So I did want to share, I know we've had some ongoing discussions about the idea of a data dashboard, and I wanted to update you with where the state is and some of their work. And I thought it might be interesting to kind of contextualize that a little bit with ESSA, which is Every Student Succeeds Act, and that is the act that has replaced NCLB or No Child Left Behind. So, we had No Child Left Behind, which was an accountability method where the federal government checked on progress of every school to make sure that the schools, that students were performing well. And the way they did that was really just based solely on, you know, one accountability measure, one standardized assessment, and often schools were penalized, you'll remember Cinnies and Dinnies, and that was No Child Left Behind. So schools were often penalized, it wasn't a supportive system, and that system was actually grabbing too many schools, saying that they were in need of improvement. When you have, you know, 70 or 80% of your schools in a state in need of improvement, there's probably something wrong with your system. So, in reaction to that, we moved into the waivers, so the waivers to NCLB, which our state did file for a waiver and we did have that waiver, which actually looked a little bit more broadly and actually pulled a percentage of schools that were those focus or priority schools instead, instead of Cinnies or Dinnies. So it relieved a little bit of the pressure and they were able to take that funding to support those schools and really target support those schools, and really target the funding and the assistance to the schools that truly needed it, instead of grabbing so many schools that were in need of improvement. And then we've moved to now ESSA, which again, is a big change and shift, even on top of that waiver system, this is even broader. So instead of just having one measure, an assessment measure, academic achievement in math and literacy, there are actually going to be five separate measures that ESSA is requiring. States are in the process of actually creating their ESA plans, so we don't know what New Hampshire exactly is going to have in their plan, but I've been in some conversations about that. So ESSA requires, as NCLB did, academic achievement in math and in literacy, so some, you know, smarter balanced, or some, whatever states choose to use for their academic measure. They also will be using a four-year graduation rate for high schools. States can request that districts provide five-year and six-year graduation rates as well. So that is something that will be used to help determine whether or not a school needs improvement or support. There is an additional academic measure, since there's a graduation rate for high schools, they're looking at a growth measure for students. So instead of just that achievement level, they're looking at actually using something like smarter balanced and tracking growth measures as another measure. And then progress for English language learners. And then the last one, the fifth one, is one that's gotten a lot of attention recently. It's school quality or student success, which is very interesting, and states have to determine what measure they're going to use for that. So that could be student surveys on school culture. It could be absenteeism rates, a lot of different, it could even be student, staff, and parent climate surveys, suspension or expulsion rates. It could also be a measure of social and emotional skills, which is very interesting. So some states have been looking at, you know, do they actually measure social and emotional learning in some way? And that is that fifth indicator there. So lots of conversations at the state level, and what's interesting is that states have to do these pieces, but they can actually require districts to provide additional measures that aren't included in what the federal government uses for accountability. So there are the state required, which is what the federal government is requiring, state-supported, which is something that the state would require you to report, but wouldn't go to the federal government, and the state would be using it. And then the other idea is having a third level, and the state in their ESA plan would outline what measures they would be using, and what level each of those measures is. So there's also a state-supported level, which is really interesting, where states might actually, for example, a school climate survey, they might allow all of their schools and districts to use a certain tool or survey, such as a survey to be able to gather feedback. And whether they require it or not, really is up to the state and how they put it in that level. So all of this background on ESA leads me to the point around a data dashboard. So we've been talking about the need to have some sort of data dashboard, especially for our public, to be able to see how our schools and district is doing. And as part of ESA, all states are going to be required to somehow report out on all of these different measures. So most states have decided, and New Hampshire has had conversations and has decided that they will be having some sort of state dashboard with all of this data. So it depends on what they, their state plan looks like for ESA, to know exactly what would be in this dashboard. But it would allow us to compare, you know, to have an active data dashboard with information in there supported by the state. And us, you know, we would, what's nice is that this data dashboard would be for all schools and districts, which would allow us to be able to easily compare through the state's data dashboard. So pretty important and exciting information moving forward. You know, we will have to wait to see what their ESA plan will look like, to know what will be in that data dashboard. But ESA plans will be due sometime this school year, and then they are looking to, you know, really implement that next school year. So I don't know what the data dashboard piece will look like, and exactly what the timeline is for that, but ESA state plans are supposed to be implemented next school year. So.
Questions?
Yeah.
We were just talking about budgets, talking about, you know, we're talking about new standards or standard budget reporting, and I'm just wondering, what is the budget impact of being able to implement something we're not even sure what's going to be required? I mean, how do we plan for something financially, physically, without the state telling us what it is we're going to be required to report on?
So that's a really good question. And actually, since we're a PACE district, we've been included in a lot of these discussions, both around ESA, but also around PACE and the data they're collecting with PACE. So the state is looking to possibly move away from Performance Plus, which is actually the data warehouse that they provide schools. And all of us use Performance Plus, we all, you know, state-level data is in there, and we actually, as a district, choose to upload additional data that's a secure data warehouse. That data, though, is, you know, meant for schools and, you know, individually to look at students' data history. It's not used as a part of a data dashboard. So the state has been exploring other platforms and models that they could use as a data warehouse, one that might be a little bit more fluid than Performance Plus. So we've been in conversations, and actually, Sauhegan is part of that work. So all Tier One PACE districts were invited to be part of this technology group that's looking at different systems that they might be implementing. And we were told that it's very probable that any PACE Tier One district would be able to get this resource for free as part of their work with PACE. So we would most likely actually have, as it stands now, most likely have access to this data warehouse and use it as our own data warehouse. So we don't know, and it's a really good question. There could be pieces, depending on how things go with the state. Things often change if a grant doesn't come through, things like that. But as of now, that's what we're being told, that PACE districts most likely would have access to this data warehouse.
Where's the most data-driven school, public school culture in New Hampshire?
That's a good question. Like, a district, you mean, that uses data well and?
Yeah, they're truly data-driven. They know what, they know, well, I suppose you would only know it from a curriculum perspective, but they really know what measures they're looking at, they want to look at. They keep track of those measures, you know, they're data-driven.
Yeah. That is a good question. You know, I know through a lot of the RTI work, and Porter was involved in a lot of this, that is very data-driven, looking at individual student results. And I know that, you know, the middle school was certainly, is certainly, you know, ahead in that area. But it's hard to say if there's a district that is using it system-wide and it's driving, you know, everything.
How data-driven was East Pinellas?
That's a good question.
I didn't get a sense that they were.
No.
It was a major thing for them. In New Hampshire, I'm thinking of Rochester for some reason.
Okay.
With their work with PACE, but also their district needs and their, I can't think of any, Hanover would be the other one, but I. How data-driven was Wyndham?
I think we definitely use data to drive more or instructional practice here.
Oh, here?
Do it more here?
Yeah, and I think it depends if you're talking, and especially the, the middle school, you know, teachers use it. The second, you know, it's amazing, they're asking me questions before I even realize they pulled their NEWA results. So I do think that teachers are using it, and really using it to inform instruction. I mean, our coaches definitely support that work as well. But it's system-wide, you know, every school, and, you know, us at the SAU level, you know, I'd have to, it's hard unless you're in another district, sometimes you don't always have that perspective.
There are few schools, like on my travels around the state, that use database and lead.
Are there other schools in Massachusetts? I mean, Massachusetts is supposed to be one of the best education systems in the world.
I wouldn't know Massachusetts, I think A and D are there, but from the schools I've seen in the distance, I've been pretty busy around the state here. Our protocols, our use of data in things big and small, it's pretty intense here.
Okay. The reason I ask is just, I probably should have asked this at the beginning and then worked backwards, but is that if we're a PACE district and we're given access to this database, they're going to be, they're going to be, is it going to be built-in metrics that are going to be warehoused in there, correct? So is it going to be scalable to our ability to add additional data metrics that we want to collect?
That's a good question. From what I understand, and again, it depends on how, what level of involvement we have in this tool, which we, we've signed on, Sauhegan has signed on to be part of the planning group to look at this tool, but it doesn't bind us in any way financially or in using this tool in the future. So we're actually able to look at this tool and, or tools, there's one in particular, and really be part of the planning. So I'm hoping that that allows us to kind of have that voice and give us what we need. But we've actually met with a company already that is one of the main tools that they're looking at, and they're, it's a very flexible tool, and it can be customized. So depending on how much we get from the state, and then how much we want to pay additional, I think there would be room for customization with that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Christine.
Thanks.
Okay, so Adam, can you give us an update on the Upper Wilkins fence?
Yes. Met with Joel Gordon and Craig Fraley to deal with the Upper Wilkins fence. We came to a compromise that everyone is happy with, minimal chain-linked fence, mostly boulders, shrubbery, split rail fence, et cetera, and other plantings. No cost to the Amherst School District. The Recreation Department is happy with the outcome, as am I, as is Joel Gordon. So crossed out off your list. We will have to bring it back here. The Historic Commission will need to sign off, and then the Board will need to approve it, once we get some drawings back from the town. It's essentially a done deal.
If you have any questions on that?
Good work.
So the maintenance issue was resolved?
Yes.
The town and the aesthetic issues?
All of it.
All of it. Thank you. Appreciate that. And Adam, also, can you give us an update on the quarterly facilities update?
Yes. As you saw, there was a less extensive report at the SAU meeting the other night. This one is much more extensive. Every quarter, we'll have these updates from John Robichaud regarding what's been done around the various schools, and he's listed those things here. We've already asked him, based on the feedback from the SAU Board the other night, to include costs of these repairs and issues for future reports.
Great. All right.
It's pretty cool, by the way. I really like having, seeing how we're maintaining our properties, because we spend a fair amount of money on our maintenance and our buildings and grounds, and this is a good way to say, well, this is what we've been doing with that.
Our folks do a ton of work, and often, folks in the public or the Board wouldn't know that we repaired the wheelchair lift, or that we, you know, any of the number of things. So it's, it's good to have you folks be aware and have some optics into what we do.
Yeah, I appreciate the addition to our packet.
So as you know, this is new this year, so thanks to Adam, we're going to do this quarterly, so I think it's a good, really good. It's great.
Okay. We are at our second public comment. Is there anyone in public who'd like to address the board? Okay. Oh, sure, come on up.
Hi. I'm John Glover of Amherst, and it's just about Christine. Christine, I could be involved with this, I think, or just hear it and think about it, but it just struck me, listening to you describe the math curriculum and the Math in Focus part particularly. And the last meeting, someone had raised the point of, how do we not only keep underperforming children up to pace, but how do we allow higher-performing children to go wherever their minds can go? And there wasn't really a clear answer to that. But it just occurred to me, with the Math in Focus, if you're sort of cutting the, a chapter that goes really deep into a concept short for other, you know, legitimate reasons, are there ways to allow children to tackle that deeper material, maybe by taking the book, when you're done with the chapter, taking it home, and they can, they know where those pages are, they could do it on their own time if they want it, or do some extra deep dive homework style for extra credit perhaps? Or any way to be able to access that information? And that toward, then I was thinking, so if you're in, let's say, your first year of Math in Focus, is your second year presume that you know the entire book of the first year, concept-wise? And I don't know the answer to that question. I would think that it might. So having an opportunity to go as deep as the book is would be helpful, I think. And that's what I had to say about that. Thank you.
Christine, you want to come back up?
That'd be great.
We're going to just have you sit up here.
She's like a permanence.
We should just put her in her seat.
I know. I get my, I'm getting my stuff in here. It's a great question, and I probably should have addressed it when I presented. What's so great about the Math in Focus resource is that it is still there as a resource. So even if a teacher isn't teaching the entire chapter, the students have the workbook and those workbook pages, they have access online to the ebook, the textbook, at home. And certainly, if they wanted to bring a book home, they definitely could. But what we actually built in, which we felt was really deeper for students, is this idea of performance assessment. So a performance assessment is created at a very high cognitive level, so it's challenging. But what's interesting about it is that when you create it, you create it in a way that all students can access it in some way. So they might not be able to get to the finished product if they're not ready to do that, but they're ready to tackle something in that performance task. So while we may have eliminated some items that were above standard, the teachers still have access to them. So a student who might actually not need the beginning part of the chapter, they already know that, you could actually allow them to go on, use the rest of those resources with that student as needed. And then they still have that really deep performance task, which is really kind of upping. And actually, the performance tasks we chose are more challenging than the Math in Focus performance tasks. So it, you know, we kind of balanced it that way, but we did feel like we were removing items that certainly, we had to make sure it wouldn't impact later on, which was a great question. And because Jen has pretty much taught, I think, every Math in Focus lesson, nearly, for almost every grade level, she really knows, she has that K5 focus. And it's funny, every once in a while, she says to me that she forgets that the teachers don't have that same understanding of how Math in Focus actually develops throughout the year, because she's taught all of it and been in all of the classrooms. So she was an important piece, that if we were removing something, we were checking to make sure it didn't have an impact later on. Or if we were removing it from third grade, maybe we're actually putting it in fourth grade, where it actually should have been, made more sense, and then allowed our third graders to go deeper in with another concept. So I, you know, and I want to make sure I'm clear in sharing that, you know, Math in Focus is still our primary resource, we're not using another textbook or anything like that. And it is still, you know, all of it is accessible for our teachers. But we actually pulled out what we felt wasn't effective, and actually allowed sometimes in some places to be able to go deeper into concepts. We looked at which concepts were most important to spend extra time on and to go deeper with, and which concepts weren't important to go deeper and spend extra time on. So hopefully that answered.
Yeah, I remember way back when, being on Math Program Review and being particularly happy that there were those additional performance tasks.
Yes.
That students who wanted to go deeper and beyond had that readily accessible, so.
Yeah. And really, a lot of this too is a conversation around, you know, personalized learning, and eventually, looking in that direction is part of our strategic plan.
Yep.
So how do we do that? And I'm hoping this actually makes it easier for teachers to be able to do that. And I know at Wilkins, we've talked about starting soon our extension block, where it gives opportunities for students to receive extra support if they need to, but if they're ready to tackle something much deeper, the teachers know what content isn't being covered in the regular curriculum, so they very easily can pull that from the Math in Focus resources to be able to do that extension.
Remembered that work?
I'm so excited about that.
Yeah, so Jerry and I have talked
So, yeah, so Jerry and I have talked, and that presentation will be forthcoming within the next few months, so.
It's going slowly, some grade levels are ready.
Yeah, it's still a little bit early, but that is forthcoming, so.
Well, it's not really, because we got it home in a.
Fourth grade is starting the end of Thanksgiving.
Okay, great.
That's awesome. Are competitive schools doing that, or?
The model that, yeah, that Wilkins is using is actually from Hollis, Hollis Primary School. A few teachers went to visit and looked at their model and brought it back to have.
So Jen will be presenting?
That's great.
Either, probably next month, I think, or?
How are we giving you next month, January?
Okay, yeah, so we'll talk about that. Sorry, Jerry needed me to.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, we were planning on that.
Yeah.
So.
I just, sorry, because it's going to be presented later. I'm just excited about that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll let it go.
Okay, great. Any other public comment? Mr. Brown?
So Frank Brown, Amherst. So the dashboard was interesting, but I noticed that there's no science on the dashboard, which is very disappointing, particularly in today's society, where overall, science seems to be starting to try and make a comeback, particularly for women, and get them interested. And so, you know, at a minimum, as we go to the state, Christine, and maybe you could voice that, and say that it really should be to make part, if it isn't there, then I think the Board should decide that it's going to be part of the dashboards for, you know, this SAU district. Because, you know, I think it's a really important area.
Oh, yeah. I see that dashboard as just a starting point, really, a minimum.
It's a mechanism at this point.
Yeah.
Small piece of work. Probably going to end up with.
Yeah.
Christine, I'm looking at the ASCD website, and it's saying that for elementary, middle schools and high schools, results on state standardized tests in reading, math, and science.
So, oh, you mean ESSA? ESSA?
No, it's ASCD.
So the dashboard, that sample dashboard that I included in there, ESSA, which is Every Student Succeeds Act, only requires states to report on math and on literacy. It doesn't require states to report on science. However, the state of New Hampshire can choose to require the students to participate in a science assessment and require to report it at the state level. So it's just that the federal government doesn't require us to have a science assessment. The science kneecap, this will be the last year of science kneecap, the state, the New Hampshire State Board of Education did just adopt the next-generation science standards. So they're looking now at some, you know, at an assessment that would match those new standards. So we don't know what's going to happen with that, if they will continue to pursue that, and it's really up to them when they create their ESSA plan, as to whether science would be part of that or not.
Yeah.
Cool.
Great. Thank you again. Okay. No action items, so we, yep, so we need a motion to go into non-public? I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
I will second that motion.
Roll call. So let me tell you what it's for. It's another 91A, column three, Roman number two, small letter A, B, and C, personnel and other. So it'll be A, B, and C, today.
And roll call?
Tremblee, yes.
Kuzma, yes.
Face, yes.
Manning, yes.
Prescott, yes.
Thank you. Sorry, we went 35 minutes over, guys.